Good morning, everyone. And we want to welcome everybody out to our regular meeting of Tuesday, January 2nd. For the record is 9:06. If you'll call rope, please.
Commissioner Brody.
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
Commissioner Omedo.
Present.
Commissioner Blankenmark.
Present.
Commissioner Dugan.
Present. Thank you. Candace, would you lead us in the Pledge of Warnings, please?
Yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Candace.
Thank you.
Commissioners' approval of agenda with drawn items, I know that, I think we have Mr. Pultman from the Association of Counties coming in later on, but we'll address that as if he arrives. I know he wanted to speak to us, I believe, under the legal matters, executive session, so if, depending on what time he shows up, maybe we can move that item up on the agenda. Anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Commissioners' reports and matters, possibly we could include another item. I know that I came in with a report of the Mexico Association of Counties conference that we had last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and part of Thursday, and definitely want some member from other elected officials that were there. But under item C, Mr. Commissioner, we could possibly include discussion of the land use rates, how we can put that on track on schedule, so that we can start looking forward to that discussion. I know that we have one member from the community, Mr. David Mysers, with the Rochester-Taus County Association. So it would be great, Commissioner and Mr. Chairman, if we can start talking about that again, so that we can put it on the schedule.
And then, any else, Commissioners? If not, we have a motion for approval as amended.
I still move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second.
Second.
And a second. No further discussion, call for the vote.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenmark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Go ahead and move on to citizens' concerns, discussion, consideration regarding the following. And we do have a number of people here from the Piñasco area, and they would like to speak to us, so we'll allow you five minutes apiece. Whoever wishes, if you'll just state your name for the record.
Thanks so much. Hello, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pam Fernandez, and I'm from Piñasco. We're all here today to speak to you about the indigent fund issue with Taus County, with Holy Cross Hospital. And my presentation is just to really ask you that you not put this issue on a fast track for a vote. I don't know what your plans are, I'm not sure if you're going to be voting on that issue soon, but it would be really, really, very helpful for all of the citizens in Taus County if you could get some more public input on this. There are so many diverse issues about the indigent fund. One of them that I know that's happening in 2013 is many of the citizens in our counties are going to, the part of the Affordable Care Act is going to begin to be implemented in 2013, and a lot more people are going to be qualified under Medicaid for their hospital and medical bills to be paid, and this is going to directly impact Holy Cross revenue. There are just, more people are going to be insured because of the Affordable Care Act. The other thing is, you know, I, Holy Cross is, individuals, if the indigent care flows just to Holy Cross, won't be able to get services paid outside of, you know, if they have to go to cancer care in Santa Fe or heart health care in Albuquerque, and that's going to really, really directly impact individuals who, from my perspective, it looks like the working poor, people who are working but, you know, don't qualify for Medicaid, who are working but can't, really would be financially devastating for a large, for something that happens, a big issue, you know, like a heart attack. They can't be taken care of here at this hospital, you know? So please, don't put this on the fast track. Please, let's look at every single issue regarding our citizens. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Yes. Excuse me, to ask a question. So, the hospital made us aware that the possibility that the Affordable Care Act would increase coverage to 38 percent from the current levels, I can't remember what they are, and so, you know, we're encouraged by that, and we understand that that's part of the formula. We do have to make a declaration to the state in February as to what our contribution is going to be, and so we're going to deal with that. We had a good work study, we've got, we believe we've got sufficient funds within the budget to take care of most of the hospital's needs in regard to that declaration, and so there's no immediate plans to consider a mill levy. But your request for us to slow down is based on what beyond what I've just described?
My concern is based on looking at every aspect of the issue, looking at the impact on actual individuals that are going to be impacted by this.
By what?
By, it's my understanding that the hospital is asking for 100 percent or close to it of the indigent funds that are available.
As opposed to splitting some of that cost with, or, uh...
As opposed to...
Providing some of that to other hospitals?
As opposed to the indigent funds following the individual.
To other hospitals.
To other hospitals or healthcare providers, such as cancer treatment, such as trauma, you know, that are not taken care of at Holy Cross.
It was my understanding that there was maybe $39,000 there, Mr. Archuleta, that we had previously been paying out to other hospitals?
That's correct.
So it's not a huge amount. The $39,000 is a very small portion of all the dollars that we're looking at, so we appreciate that heads up.
Very small amount. I agree with you, it is.
As it pertains to our budget, not individual lives, but, so thank you for that heads up. We'll consider that. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
My name is Amanda Bristol, I'm also from Piñasco. I, there's a letter, you actually got two things from us, and I wanted to read the letter also just for everybody who's in the chamber today to hear more of the concerns. I think you're right, Mr. Blankenmark, and asking about what exactly are the concerns, how do we think that indigent fund will impact individuals in terms of, I think our case is that we think dollars should follow the individuals, not necessarily a facility. And I think it's, I want to say, I'm currently studying for my Masters of Public Health. I really, really think that access to care should be of highest priority. I think it would be fantastic for Holy Cross to become a sole care provider. That would really bring a lot of benefits to this county. My concern is how the county decides to find those matching dollars. I think that's really the question the county commission should look at, is what is the best method, what is the best method to find those matching dollars? So I think that's one of my points of view. So just to read the letter, "Dear Taus County Commission and Staff, we understand that healthcare..."
And we want to welcome everybody out to our regular meeting of Tuesday, January 2nd. For the record is 9:06. If you'll call rope, please.
Commissioner Brody.
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
Commissioner Omedo.
Present.
Commissioner Blankenmark.
Present.
Commissioner Dugan.
Present. Thank you. Candace, would you lead us in the Pledge of Warnings, please?
Yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Candace.
Thank you.
Commissioners' approval of agenda with drawn items, I know that, I think we have Mr. Pultman from the Association of Counties coming in later on, but we'll address that as if he arrives. I know he wanted to speak to us, I believe, under the legal matters, executive session, so if, depending on what time he shows up, maybe we can move that item up on the agenda. Anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Commissioners' reports and matters, possibly we could include another item. I know that I came in with a report of the Mexico Association of Counties conference that we had last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and part of Thursday, and definitely want some member from other elected officials that were there. But under item C, Mr. Commissioner, we could possibly include discussion of the land use rates, how we can put that on track on schedule, so that we can start looking forward to that discussion. I know that we have one member from the community, Mr. David Mysers, with the Rochester-Taus County Association. So it would be great, Commissioner and Mr. Chairman, if we can start talking about that again, so that we can put it on the schedule.
And then, any else, Commissioners? If not, we have a motion for approval as amended.
I still move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second.
Second.
And a second. No further discussion, call for the vote.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenmark.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Go ahead and move on to citizens' concerns, discussion, consideration regarding the following. And we do have a number of people here from the Piñasco area, and they would like to speak to us, so we'll allow you five minutes apiece. Whoever wishes, if you'll just state your name for the record.
Thanks so much. Hello, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pam Fernandez, and I'm from Piñasco. We're all here today to speak to you about the indigent fund issue with Taus County, with Holy Cross Hospital. And my presentation is just to really ask you that you not put this issue on a fast track for a vote. I don't know what your plans are, I'm not sure if you're going to be voting on that issue soon, but it would be really, really, very helpful for all of the citizens in Taus County if you could get some more public input on this. There are so many diverse issues about the indigent fund. One of them that I know that's happening in 2013 is many of the citizens in our counties are going to, the part of the Affordable Care Act is going to begin to be implemented in 2013, and a lot more people are going to be qualified under Medicaid for their hospital and medical bills to be paid, and this is going to directly impact Holy Cross's revenue. There are just, more people are going to be insured because of the Affordable Care Act. The other thing is, you know, I, Holy Cross is, individuals, if the indigent care flows just to Holy Cross, won't be able to get services paid outside of, you know, if they have to go to cancer care in Santa Fe or heart health care in Albuquerque, and that's going to really, really directly impact individuals who, from my perspective, it looks like the working poor, people who are working but, you know, don't qualify for Medicaid, who are working but can't, really would be financially devastating for a large, for something that happens, a big issue, you know, like a heart attack. They can't be taken care of here at this hospital, you know? So please, don't put this on the fast track. Please, let's look at every single issue regarding our citizens. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Yes. Excuse me, to ask a question. So, the hospital made us aware that the possibility that the Affordable Care Act would increase coverage to 38 percent from the current levels, I can't remember what they are, and so, you know, we're encouraged by that, and we understand that that's part of the formula. We do have to make a declaration to the state in February as to what our contribution is going to be, and so we're going to deal with that. We had a good work study, we've got, we believe we've got sufficient funds within the budget to take care of most of the hospital's needs in regard to that declaration, and so there's no immediate plans to consider a mill levy. But your request for us to slow down is based on what beyond what I've just described?
My concern is based on looking at every aspect of the issue, looking at the impact on actual individuals that are going to be impacted by this.
By what?
By, it's my understanding that the hospital is asking for 100 percent or close to it of the indigent funds that are available.
As opposed to splitting some of that cost with, or, uh...
As opposed to...
Providing some of that to other hospitals?
As opposed to the indigent funds following the individual.
To other hospitals.
To other hospitals or healthcare providers, such as cancer treatment, such as trauma, you know, that are not taken care of at Holy Cross.
It was my understanding that there was maybe $39,000 there, Mr. Archuleta, that we had previously been paying out to other hospitals?
That's correct.
So it's not a huge amount. The $39,000 is a very small portion of all the dollars that we're looking at, so we appreciate that heads up.
Very small amount. I agree with you, it is.
As it pertains to our budget, not individual lives, but, so thank you for that heads up. We'll consider that. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
My name is Amanda Bristol, I'm also from Piñasco. I, there's a letter, you actually got two things from us, and I wanted to read the letter also just for everybody who's in the chamber today to hear more of the concerns. I think you're right, Mr. Blankenmark, and asking about what exactly are the concerns, how do we think that indigent fund will impact individuals in terms of, I think our case is that we think dollars should follow the individuals, not necessarily a facility. And I think it's, I want to say, I'm currently studying for my Masters of Public Health. I really, really think that access to care should be of highest priority. I think it would be fantastic for Holy Cross to become a sole care provider. That would really bring a lot of benefits to this county. My concern is how the county decides to find those matching dollars. I think that's really the question the county commission should look at, is what is the best method, what is the best method to find those matching dollars? So I think that's one of my points of view. So just to read the letter, "Dear Taus County Commission and Staff, we understand that healthcare system in Taus County is facing challenges. We are here today to offer our assistance and support for overcoming those challenges. We are discouraged to read last week that the Taus County was one of the top 50 rural counties with an increase in poverty between 2007 and 2011. This was a national study that came out to look at how many more people came into poverty, and Taus County was the only one listed from New Mexico that increased poverty from 2007 to 2011. We all feel the effects of the economic downturn every day. We see the homes for sale and closed businesses. This is the time to come together, but with honesty, transparency, and accountability, to plan for the economic, to plan for an economy better buffered from cycles of build and bust, an economy designed to benefit ofasenos. This is why we are not in support of more tax dollars being provided to Holy Cross Hospital until such time as they provide 100 percent honesty, transparency, and accountability to the people of the county and also to the commissioners as it is a county hospital. U.S. Commissioners must be able to examine the books along with the public. Only then will an informed and fair decision be possible. We are here to make the following recommendations. One, delay any decision regarding the indigent fund until more information is available. Do not be rushed into a decision. The full impact of such a decision on the health and well-being of county residents should be thoroughly studied and understood. Secondly, convene a blue ribbon commission of citizens from throughout the county to study the healthcare system as a whole, which includes the hospital. Convene at least three public meetings in the county to gather public input. The study report should address, at a minimum, the benefits of the implementation of the Affordable Care Act next year and the company reduction in uncompensated care through increased rates of insurance. Secondly, a comparison of various rural hospital management models to determine if a contracted corporate for-profit management scheme, which we have under quorum, is really the best model for care for our Taus County residents. A comparison of various rural hospital programs to determine another type, such as critical access hospitals, more sustainable for Taus County. A blue ribbon commission study in public meeting had a central role in gathering information and public opinion to move forward with the bond issue that built the hospital. So there is a precedent in Taus County for convening such a meeting. Thirdly, of our recommendations, that the county indigent fund adopt a policy clearly stating that indigent fund dollars flow to benefit of the eligible persons, not to the benefit of a particular facility, especially one which does not and cannot meet all the healthcare needs of Tausanos, as Pam Fernandez was highlighting. And lastly, that Taus County and the public study the examples of Santa Fe County and others, which have run into trouble with the federal government as a result of after-the-fact expenditure adjustments to the New Mexico Sole Community Hospital funds. I'm not sure how many of you follow what happened with Santa Fe Hospital, but they were using indigent funds to match with the sole community provider, and now they're having to reimburse them because the federal government said that wasn't, that wasn't a match, that they couldn't use those dollars. Maybe you're aware of that already, but I think that also needs to be taken into consideration. Again, we're here as concerned citizens who really truly care about the health and well-being of all residents in Taus County, and this isn't so much saying, "Don't support Holy Cross." We need to support our hospital, but we really need to look at the best model for the county and its residents and make sure that those matching dollars are coming from a sustainable place. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Thank you. Ms. Jean?
Yeah, Jean Nichols from Piñasco. And, you know, thank you very much for allowing us to, you know, have this time. Most of what I was going to bring up has already been brought up, and I've given you a letter that, you know, I was just kind of shocked to see the ad in the, I mean, the article in the paper last week, and then I read one of the comments, which was really good, the same thing that they have said about, you know, that the indigent fund should follow the people instead of the facility. But I just want to bring up a couple of other things. Just last week, or maybe the week before, at a UNM staff meeting, Peter Hofstadter was there, and he stated, and I quote, because, well, somebody gave me this quote, I wasn't at the meeting myself, "Holy Cross is in good shape, there's money in the bank, and we have no debt." Well, that's confusing to me when they've been coming and saying that they have a $10 million shortfall, and so I wonder what's the truth in that, and if they are in good shape, are they in good shape, or do they have, you know, this shortfall? And how are we supposed to know or believe anything without looking at open books? Also, I remember when the mill levy thing came up earlier this year, the commission again, after years of asking, you know, asked if somebody from the commission could be on their board, and I wonder, is somebody on the board now, or, you know, I mean, I think this, you know, it has to be more transparent, we have to, you know, so my suggestion was that, you know, that we do have, I understand you say that it needs to be voted on in February, but even beyond that, whatever happens then, I think we should have a in-depth study of their financial situation, and have it, you know, both by the commission and by a group of citizens. You know, we've been working for years for the community's health, and I don't really believe that Holy Cross has thought this through, and if they have, that they really care about the health of the whole community. I've included the list of all the providers that do get money from the indigent fund. I'm amazed that it only comes to $38,000 or $35,000, but anyway, that you do have a list there, and that's from the website of the indigent fund, so I know that there's a lot of people in the Piñasco area that have been airlifted, you know, somebody's just now in trauma, you know, having head surgery in St. Vincent's, you know, there's various things that do go to other places, so I just want you to, you know, consider and consider having a health study about, you know, Holy Cross and the books, and get to look at the books. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Meara, Mr. Black... Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, Ms. Nichols and other presidents. I know that we do have a deadline, and Mr. Archuleta, County Manager, maybe you can elaborate more on that deadline. Otherwise, the hospital will end up losing quite a bit of money if we're not able to meet that deadline. Mr. Archuleta, if you could elaborate on that particular day, which is February 14th, I think?
February 15th, Commissioner. Yes, it's normally January 15th, but because of the issues that have come up with the federal government, it's been extended for 30 days from that, and so we're still waiting to hear back from the state to see how soon they need that, but as far as we're concerned, the decision is to be made and put on the table before February 15th.
And, Mr. Chairman, I like the idea of, you know, possibly assigning a blue ribbon committee to conduct some sort of a survey, a community survey. I think surveys can tell us quite a bit. You know, I know that being in public office, you get to hear a lot of what goes on in the various facilities that we're involved with, and the hospital is definitely one of them. We can hear a lot about, a lot of positive news about how well they're doing, but I know that there are residents of the county that are fairly disgruntled with the way the hospital takes care of their loved ones, and so a survey would, I think, be a very good way to approach this and find out exactly how the community does feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One correction in that second letter, Ms. Nichols, I don't believe that there's any consideration of omitting funds for ambulance service, the area of savings that we're considering needs to other hospitals, and that's what amounts to $39,000. As far as a blue ribbon committee, the Board of County Commissioners can act as a county healthcare board, and I've been reading my commissioner's manual, and it says so in there, so there's a statute that does give us the authority to act as a healthcare board. We want to consider that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your show, thanks so much.
Anything else, Commissioners? If not, is there anybody else in the public that would like to? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd really like to welcome our new Commissioners. Uh, I'd really like to welcome our, our new Commissioners and, uh, I am so thankful that, uh, that we can maybe get by the shame that was brought by the last, uh, Commission majority. Um, I have an issue that was never on the agenda. However, um, I recently wrote a letter to, uh, uh, to Mr. Arceletta and, uh, Mr. Gortieras from the County Association. And I was there last week at the legislature. It was way too crazy there for me to ever speak to him personally. But, um, and, um, I must look like, uh, I must look like hell 'cause I certainly feel like it. I've been achy and feverish and upper respiratory. Um, so I'm not too organized this morning. I was hoping to get ahold of, uh, Public to Trillo and see if he could show up. I spoke with, uh, Madam Chair, Rebecca Padas, and she would not be allowed to, uh, to testify. Um, I also, um, I called Virgil Martinez last night. And I, I give, I, I gave him a scenario. I said, "Virgil, if," and he was not able to come because he was, uh, he was gonna be working a night shift. And, um, I said, "Virgil, if you've got two or three feet of snow and you couldn't get hay to your cattle, what would you do?" He said, uh, he said, "I'd call my Commissioner." And I said, "Are you confident that he would send the equipment, uh, to, uh, to remedy the problem?" He says, "Absolutely." And, um, last year, I was denied, uh, by, I don't need to, I don't need to name names. Uh, I asked when, when the grater was in the neighborhood crowding the roads if, uh, if they could, if you could just drop down Nahada's and cut me a bar ditch about thirty feet. Uh, because we had a major project for the Chomisal Ditch Association, a quarter billion grant for them to do their head gates. And then we had two weeks of heavy impact on our road. And I put material down on the road every, every year to avoid the aggravation of asking the county for anything. But this wasn't a big deal, this would've been a ten-minute job. And, and I was denied with the legal cover of, um, of Madam Counsel over there, uh, citing anti-donation clause. And, uh, I think it was a total corruption of the intent of that provision. I wasn't asking for loads of gravel to be brought into my driveway or anything. This was a ten-minute job and I was, we had to drive through two feet of water in and out of our home for months. And, um, I, I would like to, you know, I, I'm not sure what to ask for as a, as a remedy. But, uh, this was, this was a selective, uh, interpretation of anti-donation to discriminate, to personally discriminate against, against me or anybody else that, uh, that, uh, that Madam Counsel feels is unworthy. Um, anyways, I'm not gonna go on anymore, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Phil, Mr. Commissioner O'Meara. Uh, good morning, Ms. Philkey. Just wondering, uh, have you had, uh, asked for a bar ditch? Is it on a county road?
It's not a county road. It's a public road, uh, accessing, according to how, um, Peggy Nelson described. See, there's no such thing, there's two, there's either a public road or a private road. But there's no designation of a public, and it's assumed that a public road is maintained or taken care of or, there's no designation for a public road that's not maintained. So, um, um, this was, I had, I have, I had a child. Um, I had a wife that was a teacher and, uh, we had to get in and out of our property. We'd come in in two feet, in two feet of water. Uh, our brakes would freeze up, we'd come out in the morning, it was like a hazard. But this was a, in the old days, I could call in, and Joe might. I got a picture of him on the D eight, opening us up in nineteen ninety-eight in a, in that huge storm that the governor declared a state of emergency. I've got pictures of the grater. You call in, the lady on the phone would send in the equipment and, uh, or you talk, you stop by the yard and talk to the grater operator. You went to his kid's graduation, everybody knew everybody. They would, they would bring whatever was necessary to take care of it. And, and, and the officials in Taos got credit for it. And, uh, I feel like there's been a whole deterioration in that lately. So I, I hope this commission can take care of that, thank you.
Commissioner Sánchez, the chairman of Commissioners, can you, uh, touch on, on the cleaning of the yards? What I do, I talk to the personnel here to see if I can do it. And what I do in the West area, if, uh, former Commissioner Martinez would call me, you know what I would've done?
What?
I would've, I would've cleaned it with my own personal truck.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have been instructed not to go on private property. I've checked into that.
Well, this isn't, this, I'm, I'm sorry, continue.
And, uh, you know, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm doing the things right and I know what I feel for you, but, you know, I've asked and I've asked and I can't do it. But what I've done in Westa, in the surrounding communities, I go on a personal scope now and I cling for people that need help and that probably.
And you're, you're, you're a, you're a public servant in the same character.
Well, I'm just, you know, and, and I'm glad for my district and people are happy there, you know? And, uh, you know, Mr. Chairman, we do keep, we give these folks five minutes. You know, it's, it's, we had one here the other day, another gentleman. You know, it's really, uh, let's keep it positive, you know, you know, pointing fingers. I mean, to me, that's an issue that maybe we oughta, that, I don't know, it's, it's really degrading, I feel.
What's degrading? Did I insult you?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Well, I, I feel the way that, uh, that you are, you know, I mean, I do, I take care of my district, you know?
Good.
And I do.
And I wasn't putting you down, I was, I was just citing that, uh, that, uh.
Well, you can't do it, I'm sorry.
But I, I will be taking, I will be taking this to the, uh, to the legislature and, uh, and, and see if the Association of Counties can correct what the intent was of that provision. And I would really like to, uh, to maybe have counsel read, um, that anti-donation clause and see how it applies to a ten-minute job, uh, anyways.
Mr. Black? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I understand that sometimes there, there could be a, a difference of opinion about what's a public road and what's on our, um, list of county maintainers. But, you know, for our purposes, the roads that we can, that we can, uh, fix and work on are those that are on our inventory, apparently that's not. Now, our county attorney, Ms. Barbara Martinez, correctly quoted the law to you. It is a violation of anti-donation for us to go on private property. However, there are exceptions for emergencies and that's the kind of thing that our staff deals with. But our, our attorney, for her part, quoted the law correctly to you. And, so just know that. And know also that these decisions as to whether a ten-minute job is appropriate because of emergency situation are made by, uh, the head of public works and our county manager. And, and so it's, it's important for you to be able to talk to your, uh, Commissioners because we are the conduit, um, but, but once you do that, then.
Well, my Commissioners determine why I do that.
And, uh, I just wanted to make that clear because there was a, a sense of you blaming our county attorney, which was inappropriate.
Well, there was a precedent, uh, Commissioner, um, in the past. Uh, and, and, and there's also a road in El Salto that has a, I don't know what you'd call it, a dispensation or, or, um, um, a variance to, to that rule in, in El Salto for whenever, um, whenever it's necessary for, for asking for help. So I think this is just unfair discrimination or unfairly application of the intent of that law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philkey. Thank you, Commissioners. Anybody else who'd like to speak to the Commissioners or citizens? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. Uh, minutes, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following, uh, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, special meeting, Commissioners. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Can I have a motion and a second? Call the book.
Vice Chairman.
I will abstain if I was not, uh, Commissioner.
Commissioner Blankenher.
I abstain.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Barone.
Yes. Thank you. Go ahead and move on to presentation, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. A presentation regarding the NMSU Extension Office and the services it provides to Taos County, Mr. Valdez, our, our, our new county extension, uh, agent, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Dan Barone and members of the commission. Uh, as Dan quoted, I'm Tony Valdez, uh, I'm a native of Taos County. I grew up in Taos and then went off to school and was off. Uh, and then my introduction is mainly to let you know who I am and what I do and what we're involved about and to ask you some other special considerations. But anyways, I'm just gonna go back into some of my past experiences and that kind of thing, so you know who I am, where I, where I come from, that kind of thing. Anyhow, uh, I worked in Rio Riva County, the neighboring county, for twenty-two years as the county extension agent there. When the opportunity came to become a county extension agent here after Ray Torres retired, I applied for the position and was granted the position here or transferred from Taos, from Rio Riva. My intentions are mainly, you know, I'm nearing that time in my life where I won't have much more life, I don't have much more life to live, I guess you could say, or I'm at least over the hill. And so I need to look at what's gonna happen in the next ten years, twenty years. And so I, I wanna return back to Taos where I grew up in Valdez. My folks are Tony and Terry Valdez in, in, in Valdez. You know, my great-grandfather, that's why the place was named Valdez, that type of thing. Um, so I'm very familiar with that part of it, although I've been away for quite a while. I did get my, you know, a bachelor's degree in agricultural extension education with an emphasis, with an emphasis in animal science and a master's degree with an emphasis in animalism, plant pathology, and wheat science. So I bring that education portion of, of, uh, the agricultural field to you all and to the citizens of, of Taos County. Um, at this point, I'd like to, if you have any other questions, how, how can I get these to you? Just pass them out?
Here, you can, she can give you the information, she can, you can have one. Thank you.
In this packet of information is, uh, a lot of information relating to what extensions we discuss for you in Taos County and around the state. There's, uh, thirty-three county, thirty-three offices in the state or thirty-three counties. There's a county extension office in every state, every county in the state. And, you know, with that, we have, uh, an educational program that serves the citizenry of, of, of New Mexico and Taos County and a life, and a lot, lots of life uh, through the New Mexico State University, the Grand University of, of New Mexico. I don't know if you knew that. And you all, I, I'm thankful for, for your contributions. The county provides a third of the budget that goes to extension services in all the counties in, in the state of Mexico and in Taos County's, the Taos County Extension Office. You all provide for, for funding there and, uh, and the housing we're, uh, through for our heads. And if you'll notice, we have a, a, a large portion of our, our delegation that we work with is the four-H program, youth development. And you probably heard about the county fair and those kinds of things. And that's one of the main emphasis, or one culmination of things that we do from, to, to encourage and build youth life skills, uh, and through the four-H program. It's one of probably, one of the unique programs in the entire nation. Uh, it's the largest youth organization in, in this nation. Uh, in Taos County, we have approximately sixty-eight four-H members and about forty-two adult volunteers. What makes this, and all of these volunteers are unpaid employees of the Mexico State University covered on, uh, through the Mexico Parks Age Class Act and liability insurance in that respect. So they actually, all these other folks work for the Mexico State University, Taos County as well, just to give you an example. And it makes it unique because these folks do a lot of work in terms of helping the youth development, that youth develop through four-H clubs, an organized method of, of learning, parlor to procedure, you know, the whole aspect of club generation. Um, if, you know, you're probably looking through some of these and you'll see that there's lots of things that we meddle in or work on and try to educate folks on, uh, relating to, uh, what we do at the College of Agriculture and Home Economics through the Grand University. The Cooperative Extension Service Office here in Taos County is the door for a lot of folks, or an open door, we can do lots of education from the standpoint of either distance education or open up doors to the Mexico State University for youth that wanna go to the Mexico State University to obtain a higher degree, uh, or academic degree. On another note, I wanted to pass out, unless you have any other questions, on, on something else that's, uh, that's coming up, that we need some, some support and your knowledge to, to be able to, uh, pass on, uh, this information related to the state legislature.
Commissioner O'Meara, again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Valdez, welcome back to Taos. With regards to some of the, uh, projects that you all have, do you work at all collaboratively with the Taos County Economic Development Corporation?
I'm familiar with Taos County Economic Development Corporation and yes, we work with any member of the public in many facets of trying to educate lots of folks. I'm known for a fact that, uh, specialists have worked or have come up from Mexico State University to help with the Food Labeling Act type of questions and being, uh, in, in, in par with federal regulation, those kinds of things. So certainly our food technologists has worked very closely with Taos Economic Development Corporation. I have attended one meeting at this point with Taos Economic Development Corporation and I plan to invite them to our meetings and back and forth to do different things from the standpoint of helping educate the public as far as we can with different aspects relating to food production and the safety of, of uses and production of food. Uh, Taos Economic Development Center has moved beyond, you know, we've, they actually have made a hundred percent turnaround from the time they first started to where they're at now, I think. Uh, and they're one of the premier, I think, uh, commercial kitchens and supplier services to the agriculture community that exists in the northern Mexico. And I wish for there were more of these throughout the areas so that people could take advantage of some of these things. Uh, of Rio, Rio Riva County and, and Rio Riva County, there's a lot of commercial kitchens, but yet there is not a, a mechanism to get folks involved in producing food, food or products that are for resale, that type of thing. But I think it's coming, it's just, it's just a matter of time, I, I feel. The, the resources are there, it's just getting it all worked into the plan to get things worked out. So I, 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 I feel like it'll get there, but it's a good time.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, for your information, both Commissioner Barone and myself are on the board of Taos County Economic Development Corporation. I would definitely welcome you to, uh, meet with Patty and Terry and the staff at TCPC and kind of try to form an alliance, some sort of alliances that how you can work together on both of your organizations, both of these organizations are very important and the, in light of trying to create economic development, uh, very, I think it'd be very beneficial for everybody, especially the residents of Taos County if you were able to collaborate somehow in, um, the boards that, that you mentioned was reported.
Most definitely. I recently spoke with Dan at the Mexico Association of Counties about a freezer or a cooler, I don't even know what it is, Ray picked up down in southern New Mexico. I think that cooler, I don't know if it's a viable cooler or if it's even worth trying to, we, we're resurrect or whatever, but I was thinking that would be a good place to put that cooler if, if it all need to expand it and, uh, increase capacity for cooling and or freezing or whatever that cooler unit is, I'm not sure. And Dan gave me some suggestions on who to talk to and it's Michael's, at Michael's Kitchen, I guess. guess is an individual that has some refrigeration experience. So we're gonna look at that and see how we can use that in many other ways, try to enhance those kinds of partnerships as well.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Valdez, I'd like to welcome you on board. I know Mr. Torres from your area did us a great job and it's awesome to get somebody to come in with all your knowledge. And I did work with your dad at the mine.
Really?
Kind of that, good friend of mine, you know, and your uncle also. But, you know, I want to welcome you on board. I know you did us a good job.
Thank you. One more item, if I may.
Mr. Chairman.
If you look in front of you, this piece of paper here in front of you is a solicitation to the Mexico Legislature for five hundred thousand dollars for two and a half, the extension service throughout the state. And I'll leave this for you to read and whatever, unless you want to pinpoint some things that are here, but I don't want to take more of your time, your valuable time. But the first page basically talks about the introduction to the extension service and what it's doing and what it's done and what it anticipates to do and wants to continue to do. And then on the back page, probably most important, and that's the portion where these funds would go to and what has happened over the past few years and actually even further than two thousand and nine. But if you see, you look at that first graph there, you can see that funds have been dwindling over the years. We haven't had an increase in many, many years. And so we see that, as you, and if you look at the bottom chart at the bottom there where the number of clientele contacts and four-H youth, it's a reflection of the funds and what it's done as far as being able to service more folks and doing more for folks. So I submit to you, if you can, or if you have any influence with any of the legislators that maybe give a positive view of the extension service and possibly bring this, at least some dollars back into the appropriation for funding New Mexico State University Cooperative Extension Service so that we can continue to do and expand and make more outreach to more folks and help folk and educate more folks in an informal manner. So if you, just take that as a piece of information there to give you where we've been and where we're going and where we're lacking, I guess you could say.
Commissioner Barone? Mr. Chairman, and my, Mr. Valdez is asking maybe what this commission could do is our county manager could draft a letter, put together a letter of support regards to your program, requesting assistance from the Mexico State Legislature. I think that would be of benefit, I think, on behalf of Taos County. Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. I don't want to take a lot of your time, Mr. Valdez, but a couple of other thoughts with regards to drought management. You know, last week our commission attended a workshop or a conference in Santa Fe. And the Mexico State engineer brought the fact, you know, the fact that we're heading into a drought, we're already in a drought, and kind of kindly, nicely warned elected officials about the fact that we are heading into probably more of a drought within the next few years. How is your department dealing with drought issues?
Well, the ones that get affected are generally the livestock producers and agriculturists that have some sort of irritation or not, they don't have water on demand or those kind of things. So, and we work with the public from the home point of view, from conservation and that as well. We've had a series of workshops. In fact, the one workshop that we had a year recently was back in, what was it, a few weeks ago or last week, at the Ex-Science Eggs Center at here in Taos County for the stockman's. A lot of discussion takes place about drought. A lot of folks know that it's coming and it's been there. I generally sit in the FSA committee and I generally write a letter on what has been lost for non-insurable crop disaster kinds of programs. So there's some funds that come back to individuals that are registered with the Farm Service Agency. We'll receive some funds for some of the losses that they've gotten. And we'll put on workshops to do, educate folks on conservation, how to mitigate those kinds of things. We've had lots of them here in the past. If you could do one here, we can do, generally what we've done in order to more bang for the buck, I guess you could say, sometimes we combine counties like Taos, Rio Riva, Santa Fe together into a conference or a workshop or a meeting to address some of those questions and address some of the things that come about. And in our discussions and our education, we have a master gardener program coming up. You know, we talk about conservation and water use and how to use it appropriately, home use and those kind of things. So we're constantly working on giving the public tools and education that they can use on their own, for their own benefit, to be able to overcome hopefully the potential, the disaster of a drought. And we've seen it. We keep doing that. I have a producer in Rio Riva County, I think he put it really wide, but I think he can say it better and even more eloquently than I can. But he said, "The drought has caused us to manage differently. We don't manage like we used to. Now we're hauling water. We have to move cows here. We gotta move water there. We gotta change how much we irrigate." And so a lot of folks, by the way, can sense it and notice it, but we help them make, or inform them how to make the right decisions so that they are productive and can continue with their lifestyle. That's what we do, I mean, on a daily basis, no matter what, if it's a disaster or a drought. And we come up to those all the time. And so, and we've been, we've been in a drought for more than next year that's coming up. We've been in a drought for a number of years. So we've been addressing that to some, to a large extent. In fact, there's a study going on in Valdez that you may not be aware of, that Mexico State University is working on, trying to show the state engineer and others, and other, the other, another part of the study is in Rito and in Rio Riva County, and another part of the study is in the Italian Experiment Station there. I think that's another sister agency of ours that creates the research. Anyways, that, that research is gonna show where is the water going to, how is agriculture impacting the water use on agricultural lands, and how does it go back into the river system? How much is actually being used? And the studies are there. They're, well, they're actually right now on the ground trying to get that type of information. There is great information already available at the Italian Experiment Station at Benarde Valley there. The study shows that a very small percentage of that water goes into agricultural crops per se, that there's all these other services that the water serves, all the ecosystem services, you might say, the environment, the ecology, the biological systems that exist with a safe, yes, being viable entities in their systems, biological systems, or green belts. They've served so many other uses. And that's what we're trying to, or New Mexico State University and our researchers, extension agents, others, trying to show that there are more than just uses for agriculture purposes. There's more things that come out of uses on monitoring agricultural lands and other uses that folks way down river benefit from. So, yeah, we're right on it all the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blackner.
Yeah, well, welcome back to Taos County, Mr. Valdez, and thank you so much for the work you do. I'm glad to hear that in this time of scarcity, you guys are looking at and considering methods of conservation. And thank you especially for the work you do with young people in Taos County. It's great to have that option. I do object to your reference to yourself as being over the hill, though. That would be one of the reasons.
I agree. I'm getting, I feel that way almost, but I wanna feel young and continue to do well and keep my energy up, but I sometimes feel the age coming down.
I would look forward to working with you, as long as we can survive. Mr. Valdez, thank you and thank you for, you know, the number of programs that address kids and, you know, I, you know, as we see the, I wanna say, the way the world is growing, there's a lot more kids using their tums instead of their shovels. And, you know, I commend you and the different programs you have out there, you know, 'cause I don't think they can put the seeds in the ground with the press of a button, you know, maybe in some big ranches and farms in Canada. But I think it's important that we continue to, you know, move forward in that avenue, teaching the kids to grow their own crops and continue to move forward in raising their animals. And it's great when we have the fair here and you see the kids out there with their animals that they've spent the whole, you know, six, eight months producing and then the sale and the number of things that go on there. So I wanna thank you. But I do like, would like you to address, I know there was some legislative money that was given to Taos County for the extension over there for the buildings, I believe. And is that money being spent or is an avenue that you're gonna spend it so that you can continue to look for additional funding? I know there's a couple of the buildings there that haven't been completed and there's some issues with some of the buildings. And I know that Taos County does the maintenance over there, and I know there was a wealth problem. Has all those situations been taken care of? And if not, how can we help?
Well, when I, when Chairman Dan early, the staff of Taos County has been very supportive and tried to address some of those questions. I met with your county manager, Steve, early on when I first started, about two months ago, I don't even know, he had just started. But he was very responsive and sending folks out and seeing what kinds of things were lacking. And when I first got there, I heard from everybody, "Well, this is happening. This is lacking. This is not right. This is not in compliance. This building needs this. This needs that." But no one had really come up on the list. And so I started a list, and it was a simple list without priorities. I passed on to Steve and he said, "Well, we'll get right on it." And he sent his staff right away and, well, and not only his staff, but some contractors to look at the things that were out of compliance, things that were inadequate, things that were lacking, just things that were kind of broken down or needed maintenance. And so he was very responsive and I think he continues to be responsive in that manner. In fact, we had some issues with a fence here recently, but that's been taken care of. That place has never been fenced since it's been erected. So there's lots of little things like that, plus the west, the south wing extension that will require, you know, about three hundred thousand dollars to get it pretty much completed. Right now, there's eighty-five thousand dollars that Richard Chauvin, I don't know if he does here, Richard, yeah, he is here. He's working on getting the architecture to look, architect to look at the system that needs to be in place for fire protection, which is priority number one. And then he can add to many of those questions on buildings since that's not the area of my education. He always blows me away with all this stuff that he has to deal with in terms of regulation and codes and compliance and all of that. It's, it's, that's a new world for me and everyone, 'cause I already know the terminology and vocabulary that they use. But anyways, yeah, we need to look at, try to continue to work on those kind of maintenance issues. And Steve has been very supportive, plus that south wing extension that Richard and I thought were working, and Michael Correia on your department over there is also looking at seeing where we can find funds to continue to finish that particular south wing portion of that building. So, yeah, I don't know what else I can add to that. That's all I know.
I just wanna make sure, Richard, that that money is being, gonna be spent. So, you know, the legislature continues to grab funds that aren't spent, and we don't wanna go lose that. So I wanna make sure that's, we're moving on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go on, discussion of arts committee and sculpture for center. Before we are at Taos County Complex, Mr. Archuleta.
I believe we have some people in the audience. Mr. Martinez, I would like to talk about that. I also did receive a letter from Mr. Whaley over the last week, and we are gonna be scheduling a meeting for that. We've had a couple of discussions with people, sculptures, but, or people that do the sculptures, but I think it's really important that those people come in front of the arts committee. The arts committee make those determinations. Part of the other discussion that's been happening, reference the complex, has been actually some of the local artists putting up some of their local art here for display so that we can make it a more attractive facility. But, Mr. Martinez, do you wanna?
And then, Mr. Archuleta, just before you go on, just to bring the other commissioners kind of up to speed, a committee was formed, no, I wanna say it's been about six months now. And basically, we had a couple of meetings. We went and viewed a particular piece of art. And basically, after that, with the change of administration, it's kind of just kind of fallen by the wayside. But there is a committee ready to act, ready to move forward on. I sit on the committee, but I don't know a whole lot about art. So if there's somebody else who would like to sit on that committee, I'd be glad to give up my spot. But there is a number of things that we need to move forward. And one of the things too is, you know, it was brought to us actually for the use of our parking lot for the, what is it called?
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market. So, and that's something that will be coming to the committee too. So without taking up any more of time, please.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Martinez? Yeah, I was chosen to be on this committee and right now, I don't have a whole lot of information because we haven't been a lot. Mr. Whaley, I believe, will have a little bit more information than I have. But the main thing right now is, yes, we have seen, we have gone out to look at the struck, the, the sculpture.
Sculpture?
Sculpture, thank you. And we, there's been some follow-up that we haven't been able to have access to, so I'm not really sure if it's been done. But as far as the committee, I believe we're ready to continue doing our work and building and doing whatever we need to do. And we hope you all will support.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve on it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had asked the staff to put this particular item on the agenda last week 'cause I thought it was very necessary. I think, you know, we've all grown as a community that loves art. And we have a lot of people that are very blessed and are very talented to be able to produce art, whether it be sculpture or images or patas or rutos or other forms that kind of tell the way of life and history of the community. So, you know, one of the first impressions that I got when I came in just a few days as a county commissioner, a few days ago, a few weeks ago, is, "Our building looks pretty naked. You know, it doesn't have any art and we live in an art community." I appreciate the letter that we got from Mr. Whaley, who was part of that commission, that has been appointed by previous commissioners. And it kind of sums up as to what they're doing so far. But I really feel that it's something that we need to move forward, you know, to put on fast track and try to get it done. I heard somewhere that there was a budget of about two hundred thousand dollars available on this particular endeavor. And I sincerely feel that not all of that money is necessary for this particular group, since we do live in an art community. There are many ways that we can possibly have art that could be rotated, you know, whether it be in the form of sculpture outside or even inside, but also in the form of canvas or photographs. And I know that a lot of ideas have been exchanged, a lot of ideas do exist in this letter that we did get from Mr. Whaley. So I really feel that it's something that we need to look at and completely open up to and let's move on it so that we can get some stuff presented in our beautiful complex here. Also wanted to make a suggestion that when we're in the need of other monies available out there, the New Mexico Arts Division has a program also that would, in the past, has contributed great amounts of dollars to our community so that we can have more community art and forums and all that good stuff available to us. And I would be willing to say that we should approach them. Our planning department or Office of Community Development should look at their history as well as the availability of grants that are available to the New Mexico Arts Division. And I'm pretty sure that we could tap into some responsibility through that organization, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Barbara?
Yes, sir.
There was some legal questions about that, uh, piece that were, was kind of brought over. I think there was some legal questions of who actually owned it and stuff like that. Had, has any of those been addressed?
Um, I don't, I don't, I think that there was a probate open, there was all some of those issues, but I'll check on that issue.
Okay. And, Mr. Whaley, do you have a question?
Please, um, just, just briefly, um, I was appointed to the committee along with Leslie Haynes, Jeanette Ryle, Roger Martinez and Richard Sanchez and Mark Flores. And we met with, uh, the county manager and commissioner Baroni twice in June and July. Uh, and this was in response to the Taos, Taos County Resolution Number Two-Eleven dash fifty-four, which I have a copy of. And when we discussed the sculpture, uh, what had happened is Ted Egery died, he had a sculpture, his property was, uh, went to his wife. And, um, since that time, she has moved to Minnesota. Apparently, she's in some stage of dementia. I've been in touch with Huberto Miestes, who is a friend of the Egerys and has been inventorying the property, but he said the, the probate's open and even the, the property itself hasn't been probated now, so everything's kind of up in the air. But he said he would, he would, uh, be able to give me the names of the attorneys involved and maybe I can give it to Barbara. And our second, I think the most important thing that we need to do next, um, and we're just an informal committee, we've only met twice, but uh, we discussed the need to educate ourselves via workshops with local professionals, uh, regarding policy and procedures, uh, for curatorial duties, acquisition and exhibition, resolve questions of security, rotating exhibits, donations, gifts, et cetera, because we, we, if, if we create a criteria, then we can respond responsibly and sensitively to the community, because, you know, we're gonna be, once we open the doors, we'll be besieged by, by all kind of artists, galleries, um, you know, the elementary schools wanting to have exhibits, et cetera, because the space is so fantastic, you know. I know we really need the appropriate Santo right there, uh, between the commissioners to keep an eye on. So, and I've served on a variety of task forces in the county and one thing I, I think, uh, you know, we'll probably need so we don't take six or seven years to accomplish this task is maybe some technical assistance or administrative assistance or something like that. And I, I know we're really happy to have like Richard and Mark on the committee so that we can talk about questions of security and, and detachment. I did speak briefly with Jean Sanchez, uh, who used to own Gallerie and was a town counselor and, and artist and, and has written a book. And he served for several years on the governor's task force for the Roundhouse. And he said it was really important to establish that criteria so you could have, uh, so people knew why you were accepting a piece of art or rejecting a piece of art. But given the flexibility of the complex and also the rest of the buildings in the county, it just seems we can find something for everybody. Um, but whereas in the most public spaces, we want to make some kind of policy to determine what kind of mix of art we want to have, whether representational or abstract or traditional, et cetera. And I, I know the parking lot's an ideal place for, for outdoor sculpture. There's very few places in, in Taos County that are really exposed for like a sculpture garden or something like that. So, we, we are, I think the committee's ready to move ahead. We're just waiting your wishes, whatever you would like us to do. Any questions?
Commissioner, Commissioner Valdez.
Thank you. Um, yeah, well, we do have a great empty palette here, other than the elk and the pictures of the commissioners out there. Pretty wide open. And so I just want to know, and, and I'm, I'm really excited about the prospects. Thank you all for, uh, donating your time, people's time and donating time to these things is, is so critical. So, what can we do to help you establish the policies and criteria necessary to get this?
Well, I, I think, um, I don't know how my fellow committee members, I'm just speaking for myself. First of all, I think we need to meet like once a week for a while or twice a month or something to get this thing going. And then we need to, uh, get some examples of other policies and decide, you know, for instance, Richard could be really helpful in ter, in terms of providing floor plans or wall plans or something, so we know what spaces should show what kind of art, you know. And there's, and I know that we'll be offered, you know, friends will offer art. We don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. And we can probably show it, but, you know, maybe not in the main atrium or something, you know. And, uh, we don't want to get into a situation where, for instance, like the old courthouse where, uh, you know, they went through a process when they built the courthouse and they had that Ken Drew piece over the jury box and I know a lot of people objected. So, we don't want to put up anything that, you know, in a certain place that people will find controversial necessarily or, you know. You know, we probably shouldn't put a nude up behind the.
Probably not.
You know. So, you know, we, we just, and, and it'll, it'll take us a couple of months, I think, to become well-educated, because none of us are professionals. But we can get, you know, people from the Harwood to help us, people from the Melson Rogers, uh, and, and various other individuals, maybe the Heelys from the Healy Foundation. Because we believe, once we set up the proper criteria, people will donate art, we can have shows, um, you know, and we can raise money. And we have some ideas for fundraising too. So, I, I don't think it'll cost the county anything. If anything, I would like to see them reserve those funds for, for installation and security and for those, as opposed to buying art. I don't think we should get in the habit of buying art, else we'll create a rat's nest.
Sounds like a good plan to me. Uh, we're going to pass the resolution. Uh, county staff is available to come wherever we can, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, along the same line, I, I believe Mr. Sanchez, um, has somewhat become involved in this committee as well. I know that sometime in December, uh, Mr. Mike Trillo from Office of Community Development had emailed to me a series of black and white, uh, images from one of the state libraries. Um, and a lot of these images depict, uh, the state of New Mexico, but most importantly, northern New Mexico and Taos County. Um, and I believe that some of these images or most of them are available for, for reproduction. Now, well, that, there's now the process that you can reproduce these images relatively cheap, like fifty bucks, uh, an image for a poster size. Um, black and white images and some of that could be used in, in the temporary maybe or in the medium, so that we can, uh, start, uh, working on, on that effort.
Right. Uh, Jeanette Ryle spoke to me about that too, about she and, uh, some of the judges, I guess, have been looking at archival images that we could, we could get for nothing. It would just be the cost of, uh, you know, framing and stuff, which is not inexpensive. Anyway, we'll try to develop all that and come back to you and, and up to the plan or something. I mean, with Steve.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Whaley, um, you gonna be doing rotation of the art?
Yeah, what I would like, what I would like to see is have, just, we, we ever, well, I was on a committee for the old courthouse at one point. And I always thought that what we should have is a, a section set up so each of the villages or the outline areas can, can have rotating exhibitions too, you know. And if we have rotating exhibitions, that lets us off the hook for, for instance, if we, if somebody offers us a piece of art, maybe we don't want to have it in the permanent collection, but we can have an exhibition, you know. And I think that's all part of it, yes.
And Mr. Whaley also, you know, that's, that's what I'm getting to, you know, I've got a lot of the people that are into art, very, uh, professionals at it in my district from Mileway to some.
Right. I, I know that there's a art tour up there in that area. I guess I'm aware of that.
And I would like to, down the road, when you get ready to have, you know, I want to, uh, let my constituents in my district know about this, that would be part of the.
Right. Well, we, we certainly, in, in my experience, uh, on various task forces for the county community outreach, we know is key, you know. Um, so, we'll, we'll try, we'll definitely reach out to all the artists in the community and the different organizations. There's lots of different organizations, but they're fairly accessible.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Whaley, uh, and Mr. Chairman, my recollection, and maybe you can confirm this and maybe this will be helpful or not, but my recollection is that Mr. Caldwell, um, was, prior to his separation, was, uh, tried to find, uh, several persons that were knowledgeable about curating to come and, and help give the committee some direction with respect to curating a permanent collection. And maybe that's something Mr. Archuleta can.
Right. Some of the, uh, some of the names we mentioned in addition to Jean Sanchez were, or at least I thought of it, Gina Brenneman and Gus Foster from the Harwood, uh, Fred Peralta, who was at the Melson Rogers, Michael Martinez from the Melson Rogers, um, and there, and there's other people too. There's a plethora of talent in the community.
Mr. Chairman, um, if I could make some more suggestions, uh, Anita Allison from the Ackland Gallery and Sue Westburg from Taos Blue. These are, um, two individuals that I've known for many years now. They're, they're very talented. Anita owns the, both of them own galleries and shops on the Plaza, near the Plaza.
I know.
And they're, you know, they, they know quite a bit about the art.
Right. Well, one thing we could do, Commissioner, probably is have this, this, uh, committee serve the county. And then maybe we can get an advisory art committee to help us make selections when it comes to, say, the permanent collection, you know, or permanent donation. I mean, I, I've spoken to Huberto, he's very enthusiastic about it. I've talked to Maya Torres about it. She, I mean, I think we have no, we'll have no trouble acquiring pieces.
And then, Mr. Chairman, there's the New Mexico Arts Division, which I mentioned earlier, um, good source of funding.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, Mr. Archuleta.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, uh, just to let you know, staff just advised me that we have a, um, we'll be sending out invitations for a meeting on February sixth at nine AM. So, February sixth, nine AM. We'll be sending out those invitations. We have, that's the first meeting and then before.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the board? No? Okay. Go ahead and move on to, uh, county managers' report on matters and, and you have, you have.
Mr. Chairman, I do have just a couple of quick items. I didn't get them on the agenda because there's items that just came up. I'm gonna go ahead and pass out the Capitol Lotlight Projects, um, as the list that was requested by the agencies to the Legislative Council. I have those available, uh, for the commissioners to review and also who sponsored each one of them. Um, so I wanted, uh, the commission just to be aware of those, those lists and what is actually being, uh, put out there at the legislature at this point. So, I will pass those out, uh, immediately after this. The other thing was that last week at the New Mexico Association of Counties, Taos County was presented with a plaque that I wanted to inform the staff about, which is the Twenty Twelve Rap Award, presented to Taos County for successful completing of three years of NMAC risk awareness programs. And we do see the multi-line claims by forty-nine percent within Taos County. I think that, uh, a, a great accomplishment by the staff. Uh, I think we have a lot of things to look forward to in the future, but I think we, uh, have a step in the right direction. So, I wanted to let everybody know that Taos County was, uh, given this award, uh, last week at the New Mexico Association of Counties, Mr. Chairman.
And, uh, thank you, Steve. I think that's, we need to applaud that. I think, you know, it's great that, you know, our staff is working diligently and reducing those, those, uh, costs. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay. So, we'll go to the commissioners' reports and matters of discussion to recent decision regarding the following discussion, discussion and determination of Taos County Housing Authority as a standalone, uh, program. Mr. Archuleta.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you know, that we, uh, met last week and, and had a work group session on this, um, I think that it needs to be as a, uh, form of a motion by the commission at this point, uh, as to whether or not, uh, of the three options that we're gonna take, um, I think what was discussed was option number one, that we would leave it as a standalone, um, and leave it within the housing, try to accomplish the board and, and work with the board to, um, make it a more viable system. Uh, option number two, bring it into Taos County on a short-term basis, uh, to have the different departments within Taos County help that. And then hopefully, within an eight to twelve-month period, actually, um, push that out back as a standalone system. And then option number three would also be to bring it into Taos County as, and actually set it over at the planning department across the street and make it a, uh, component of Taos County for the future. So, I think that the commission needs to consider which one of the three options and make a motion based on it.
Commissioners?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The housing authority statute is, is clear that there can only be one governing body to a housing authority. And that governing body has the authority to hire an executive director. Um, we have hired an executive director and so I, I believe that we have already accepted the authority, uh, running that housing board. Um, but I also believe that there's, uh, some agreement on the board accounting missions, I guess we'll find out pretty soon, um, that the best option for us is to allow our new executive director to see if he can right the ship, which we all feel confident he can. Uh, and then, once that's accomplished, to begin to recruit, uh, members of a new housing authority board, um, that will have, uh, a cross-section of the population, but also some expertise in property management and, um, new funding for new construction. Uh, currently, um, we are all hopeful and optimistic about our new hire. Uh, a lot of this is gonna depend on the energy and effectiveness of Mr. Carey and, uh, we're going to, uh, I'm, I'm sure the county manager and staff are gonna work with him, uh, to make his job go as well as possible, uh, to, to bring everything back up to the standards that's required. And so, in, in my mind, since we've already taken that authority and the statute is clear that there can only be one governing board, uh, I believe that we should, uh, accept option number two, take it in temporarily, dissolve the current board. There's nothing personal against those board members. We have great appreciation for the work that they've done. Um, but to take that route. And so, um, that's my preference and I'll, I'll wait for further discussion before making a motion.
And I'll second that motion and.
Oh, well, then I'll make the motion.
Oh. I'll second that motion. Discussion, we have, uh, room for discussion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, uh, really appreciate the fact that our county manager has, uh, moved forward with trying to get the housing authority on its feet and in hiring Mr. Carey as the executive director. Uh, Mr. Carey is definitely wanting some input from this commission on how to, uh, stabilize the, uh, housing authority. Uh, but he also wants input on, from this commission on, uh, how to move forward with the board and what are the things that will improve it. Um, I certainly appreciate the efforts, um, of the board that is serving, I don't know how many years, uh, at this point. I know Ms. Bella Baroni is here. Um, thank you for the efforts that you have put into, to this, you and the others. Uh, but I also agree that, uh, we probably have to go with, with option number two of how to, uh, run the authority at this point. Um, our county manager is also, uh, taking on the effort of, uh, securing the staff, not only our executive director for the housing authority, but, you know, Mr. Bellis has come on board as well. And I know that that day that we had a work study, uh, with the two individuals, uh, that, that they, they had informed us that they want to see us move forward with it. Uh, but also we need to give some instruction to our director and our staff as to how to move forward with the housing authority. Um, definitely want to see, um, the need for affordable housing addressed by the housing authority. Uh, as we mentioned earlier, there's a, a great need for affordable housing in Taos County. And I really believe that we have the, the staff on board that we will address this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman, commissioners also, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Curry for appointing his position. I think he's a professional and he can make things happen. It's been stagnant for a year. We need to move forward with this and I think, uh, him coming on board, uh, it's, it's gonna be a win-win situation for all of us. So, I also, uh, in, in support of the commissioner, blanket one, recommend a, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the motion was what? Uh, option two, to, uh, bring it in-house for maybe up to a year and, uh, then we'll go on the recommendations of our, uh, of our newly hired director. Uh, Mr. Archuleta, staff over here, are they gonna help out? And they have to, a lot of the staff that will have on board, remember we do.
And they have to, a lot of the staff that we have on board, remember we do...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think what we're going to happen is that, once the Commission makes their recommendation and votes on that, then it's up to me and staff to come up with an actual roadmap as to how we're going to do that. We have been working with the Housing Authority already on some aspects. Mr. Ram has helped with some of the financial portions of that. We have been doing some of the issues around making sure that we look at all our assets that are out there, that we document where those assets are, what's going on with those assets. And so, you know, part of that plan is also going to be how we're going to hire staff from some of the staff that have left, some of the staff that have retired, and making sure that we have good qualified people running that. Our ultimate goal is going to be that, of course, that we make it self-supporting and that the staff are able to do that, but we really need to come up with a roadmap very quickly here, within the next 30 days, to bring back to the Commission, basically advise you as to what we're going to do. We'll use Mr. Carey's expertise, and at that point, look at the bare minimums of what we need to do to make it a successful Housing Authority, get us out of the financial situation that we're at right now, and then stabilize that. And then, in the future, we can look at affordable housing and all those other options that are there.
Commissioner.
And is Mark Flores going to have enough time to delegate to the people out there? Because I don't want this to come back at me like what happened this weekend. People from the Housing Authority go out there and I drink the water, and the gentleman just tells them, "Well, I'll be back in a month." Just, I don't want these problems to be a pair again. So, we ought to go and run this place, if we ever have to get it. Not the most outstanding way to do it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Flores will be used to make an assessment of what happened this weekend. Basically, we were not able to find an actual plumber to go out to Taos County Housing. There were several phone calls that were made, and actually, the housing staff did work along with some county staff throughout the weekend, and are actually still out there today trying to make sure that the residents out there have the water that they need. It's an unfortunate situation in Taos County. We had never had water freezing at the Pinyasco Housing Authority in the past, but because of the temperatures and how cold it's been just recently, I mean, it was even difficult for the backhoe. Yesterday, we brought in jackhammers, backhoes, everything we could, tried to break through the ground in order to defrost that and get to the pipes, and we finally were able to do that, but at night, things started freezing all over again. So, they're out there working this morning. In speaking with Mr. Flores in the past, Mr. Flores has also advised me that he is willing to look at schedules, look at his staff, look at the expertise that we have, and assist in that. But I want to reiterate that what we're trying to do with Taos County Housing is really build the, its own capacity within Taos County Housing to do that. So, that's how we're going to hire, those are the expertise that we're going to look at and hopefully hire in the future.
So, then the motion is to go with option two?
Option two.
Bring it in-house and eliminate...
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Whitehead, if you will kind of reiterate, option two, form a motion.
Okay. The motion is to allow the Board of County Commissioners to act as the Housing Authority Board, to dissolve the existing board, and to instruct staff to set a roadmap for the eventual creation of a standalone Housing Authority Board that will be occupied by people with expertise necessary to run an effective Housing Authority Board.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think the last part, we should just leave that. Since we're going to bring it in-house, we'll decide where we are going to get board for it to be a standalone. Right now, you're on that, on the motion.
Well, Mr. ...
Run down with that, we'll handle that. A year from now, six months from now? Or whatever?
Commissioner, I think it's important to stay on intent, and I do believe that that is on intent, and so I'll stick with the motion as stated.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
And it should go without fail to say, late in our meeting with HUD during the work study, and late in the meeting, the HUD office did come out and say, and I want to just congratulate Dana and Rick Bellis, because if it wasn't for Dana and Rick Bellis, we wouldn't even have a Housing Authority today. Basically, they came on and said, if it wasn't for these two people in Taos County, the HUD, the Housing would have dissolved. So, I just want to commend them too for stepping up to what HUD expected. And thank you, guys, and I'd like to, I know my wife's sitting in the audience, thank you for serving on that board for the time you did, and I know you have an appointment by the Governor for the regional board, so thank you for that. So, any further, Barbara?
I just wanted to say that dissolution of the Housing Authority Board will have to be done by resolution, which I can, I can bring to the Commission as a government, because I don't want anyone to, I take this vote as direction to staff and will figure out how to fix it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just one last question, Ms. Martinez. That will happen at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion and comments? Not comfortable?
Vice Chair Metta.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorst.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Veroni.
Yes. New Mexico Association, moving on to the New Mexico Association of Counties Commission Report, NMAC Board Member Report, Commissioner Omer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, the County Commission, along with our County Manager, various staff, and other elected officials in Taos County, attended the New Mexico Association of Counties Conference in Santa Fe last week, and I would like and appreciate reports from our County Treasurer, Susan, as well as our County Clerk and Deputy, Anna, and Valerie, as well as the other Commissioners. On my behalf, I attended, I am the representative of the County on the New Mexico Association of Counties Board, and they had quite an agenda that was presented and worked on. And there were a couple of items there, Mr. Chairman, that I would like to talk about. The first one is that the New Mexico Association of Counties hosts their summer conference every year in a different county. Unfortunately, Taos County had not put in a proposal to be able to host that conference that attracts and brings in more than 500 elected officials to a county. So, being on the board, I was able to speak on behalf of Taos County, but not before I spoke to our County Manager about the idea of possibly Taos hosting the conference. I thought that it would be available with the conference, Taos County hosting the conference would possibly be in the very near future. Unfortunately, the Board of Directors has moved ahead in allowing the year 2013, 14, and 15 to be, those sites have been chosen already for the conference. However, the year 2016 is available, and I know that Bernalillo County is possibly looking at hosting the conference in 2015 and discussing the idea with some of the Board and the individuals responsible with selecting and making sure that a county, the host county, meets all of the criteria of hosting this particular conference. I, it seems like we would be a definite contender for being able to host it in 2016. And the idea why I look at this, and I'm sure the rest of the Commission does, is that having 500 individuals come to Taos County for a conference is a great economic development opportunity. And so, I would hope that within the next few months, I know that the conference is going to take place, I believe, in Chavez County this summer, that we have some sort of a proposal available for the New Mexico Association of Counties Board to look at. I know it's a little premature, but I think it always helps that we work in advance so that the people that are going to, in fact, make this decision within the next year or so, will look at Taos County in favor of it. So, I know that one of the things that I said at the Board meeting was that Taos County is definitely able to host 500 people, that we have at least 500 rooms available. So, I would welcome any input from our elected officials, from the public, our County Manager as to how we can bring this annual conference to Taos County in 2016. Other ideas, Mr. Chairman? I know that the Association of Counties also put forward a resolution that the County Commissioners affiliate passed with regards to the U.S. Forest Service, with regards to proposed travel management plans of National Forest. In the state of New Mexico, as you all know, we're all surrounded by both the BLMs as well as the National Forest, the Carson National Forest. And, Mr. Chairman, I would really like for, I know that the Forest Service has advertised in the newspaper for public input, but it would be great, Mr. Chairman, if our County Manager could set up a work study or some sort of a meeting that would bring in individuals from the National Forest, the Carson National Forest, to come in and discuss the idea of what exactly they plan to do or how they plan to come up with a management plan on our National Forest, not only Taos County, but also Mora, Rio, Rio, and Santa Fe. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. I have it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my only question on that is, would you want that work study more as a regional with some of the outline communities, or is it something that we would do just for Taos County with the intent of looking at those other communities also?
I think, to start off with, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be really good to be able to meet, to have the National Forest Service folks come over to, or we can meet with them. I believe we have a lot more room available for the public to come and attend in an open meeting, an open forum. It would be great if we could start off with just a meeting between the Commission and the Forest Service individuals, and then as soon as possible, move on to other municipalities or other counties, as I mentioned, Mora, Rio, Rio, Santa Fe, even Colfax.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, another one with regards to the idea of affordable housing. It's a good thing that Mr. Bellis is here. I know that a presentation was made by Mr. Terry Bruner, who is with the, he's the State Director for the United States Department of Agriculture, and I would like for him to come and do a presentation to Taos County. I know that he did state the fact that Taos County is probably one of the counties that has the more, the most contact with this department with regards to availability of loans and grants that are out there. But I, like I said to him, there's always the possibility of trying to bring in more funds to Taos County, especially with regards to the idea of affordable housing. So, I do have a card, and I believe, Mr. Arzul, that you have a card for Mr. Bruner, Terry Bruner. His office is in Santa Fe, but it would be great also, at some point, we could have a work study session with Mr. Bruner, discuss the idea of affordable housing in Taos County. Massive, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners? To the left, to the right.
No, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I was representative of the multi-line pool, and as our County Manager stated, we have made some great progress in our lost counts over the past few years, but we still have a ways to go. Our loss ratio is still higher than average. Most of those losses in most counties, of course, come from detention and law enforcement. And my idea on detention is the possibility of getting an accreditation from the New Mexico Association of Counties. There's only a couple of counties who've done so far. It does take a couple of years. I'm not sure exactly how much it costs, but I think it's something that should be discussed. We would learn a lot. Running jails is serious business. It's dangerous, it's hard to do, and I think that the New Mexico Association of Counties has come up with a really good program. If we're able to get through that process after a couple of years, we do save 5% on our premiums, which is no small amount. As to law enforcement, there is a statute that's been on the books for 60 years now that allows Board of County Commissioners to actually set up a merit pay system within the Sheriff's Department. This is something that we would certainly want to do with cooperation with the Sheriff. I know our County Attorney has already approached the subject with him. It may also be something that we want to look at as a board that could possibly help us lower losses in the future. Otherwise, the conference is always great. You learn so much. You get a little tired after a few days, but once you get home, you realize how much you learned. I used to go to the Attorney's Affiliates, now I go to the Commissioner's Affiliates. I was surprised to find out that Commissioners like to talk even more than Attorneys. It was very good, and I plan to go in the summer also. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
How about claims on the Road Department? They state anything on that? Mr. Sheriff approached me the other day and said, "Well, just don't look at me. I want you to look at the Road Department."
Yeah, our house modifiers do cover the entire range of our operations. What I, I couldn't get a good enough breakdown, but what I've done is...
Can I get a little more?
I can. I've written the New Mexico Association of Counties and asked them for a breakdown that would show us our weakest spots and make some suggestions. So, I'm hoping that by the next meeting, I'll have that information. I'll let you know personally.
That's where I can direct it to the Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Anna, did you like to address?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Martinez and Sergeant Arzul. We just returned to Friday from the affiliate. In our affiliate, it was mostly cleanup bills as far as voter identification, marriage, license, just cleanup. We were informed on some things that we hadn't currently have in place, so it was educational. And we in the Clerk's Office would be willing to do anything we can to get post the conference in 2016. Thank you.
Ms. Susan, would you like to?
Morning. Commissioner Veroni and gentlemen, I was very privileged to have gone to this, to this conference. Again, it's, there's a huge learning curve. You don't realize it until you're in there, and you really know the law. I knew the law on the finance side, but I realized that there's a whole set of rules on this other side. And so, it's learning them and just thinking before they fit into the functions of the Treasurer's Office. But we did attend a, one of the sessions, and that is knowing your role as a Treasurer. And the other part was the assessment. So, we did that class. It was a class that you get credit towards your certification in your role as a Treasurer. And we also attended a committee meeting for the mobile homes. And it was just a handful of us that were there and they're trying to bring continuity within the state to see how we're going to handle and capture that whole industry of putting our, the mobile homes on the tax rolls and even the moving of mobile homes from one county to another, that everyone is doing, runs business in the same manner. So, that was very interesting. We're going to be having a work session and a workshop on this. Again, we're going to visit this whole process again on March the 20th and the 29th, and so it's going to actually kind of coincide with our, with the Bike Hall Conference. And, but I was, we... And, but I was, we also had another, another session, and that was with the assessor's office, and that was put together by DFA. And again, it's very interesting how it just comes together, the assessor Andy and the treasurer's office. So, I am so looking forward to learning that, that part of it. And again, my experience in, in finance has helped me, and, but I have much to learn. And I appreciate the fact that, that staff is so, again, they love their jobs and they do it so well. So, that just really helps me be free to be able to learn everything else that I need to, so I can lead properly. I, I was working on a certification for a public official. I need one more class. I'm going to be completing that during the BIPO conference and then proceed on with the treasurers. But thank you for the opportunity to share what we have gleaned from the, from the conference itself. Again, you, you, there were 16 new treasurers throughout the state, and so there's a huge number that, that have come in, and, but there, there are many seasoned treasurers that make themselves available, have made themselves available to, to kind of coach us along, and that's where we do mostly learn from each other. So, definitely going to these conferences is an excellent opportunity, opportunity to, to learn and to be a part of what goes on in not just Taos County, but in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And, you know, it's, it's great to, you know, further educate ourselves, you know, in the, in the realms of what goes on in county government. You know, one of the other things that I think all of us got to do is go see our legislators, senators, and representatives, and actually disseminate or pass on our requests, you know, for Taos County. And just, Mr. Archuleta, and just bringing a point back, that list that you passed out, those are besides what we've put in for. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. This is everything so far that's been introduced for Taos County total. So, what we're doing is keeping tabs on that, we're also writing letters of support, and also trying to sit at committee meetings to support those different endeavors throughout Taos County, Honda Water Association, those kind of things, yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just one note from the county managers' report. One of the things that I wanted to, to do from last week's meeting is really challenge staff and challenge all our department heads in Taos County to have some graduates from Taos County with a New Mexico Edge. At the end of the session, we saw about 50 or 20 people from across the state that actually graduated with some of these classes from the New Mexico Edge. I know that we have a lot of staff that have been involved in some of these classes, but I really want to challenge staff and challenge the administrators or the department heads in all of the departments to, let's get our staff involved in there. It really helps search professionalism. It helps search certification, and I'm hoping that at some point down the line, we'll also have, lower some of our insurance costs, that we have a lot more certified people throughout Taos County. And so, I will be making that challenge tomorrow when I meet with the executive team on it.
Thank you. You have no other comments or questions on this item? We'll go ahead and move on to other discussion of the land use regs. Mr. Romero?
Mr. Chairman, I know this has been a heated topic for the last year or so. Sometime last year, January, February, it was when this item came back to the commission. The commission did not support it for many reasons. Through the summer, it became a discussion, one of the discussion for many of our campaigns, and of course, it also stirred up the various new associations that have been formalized. So, I really feel, Mr. Chairman, that it is, the land use regs and the adoption of them are something that are very necessary in our community, in our county. I know that there are, you know, Mr. David Mias is present here and representing the Rancho's neighborhood. Would like to maybe, if at all possible, hear from you, Mr. Mias, some of the things that have been going on within various communities. I really feel that it's something that we need to put back on the table, Mr. Chairman. Let's work on it and make sure that the entire public of Taos County is up and up on it and aware of what's going on with it so that we can make a decision with it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mias, if you wish to... Addressable?
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Ms. Martinez, Mr. Bellis. Just so you know, I wasn't planning on talking today. I was just going to sit in the back there. Mr. Romero and I didn't have any conspiracy going. But I guess I would appear before you as a self-appointed representative of all the neighborhoods, which is what I've been functioning as in the last few months, just getting everybody together. Just as a general statement, one of the reasons I'm involved in this is that I believe that establishing a land use regulation for Taos County is probably the single most important thing we can do for the county in perhaps my lifetime. Land use regulations determine everything, every aspect of life, agriculture lands where you can put businesses, the density areas of housings. This is a big, big deal for Taos County, and that's the reason why I'm involved in this and not home watching TV or reading the Denver, the Denver football league. And so, the other thing I would like to say is, Taos County and Taos County Commissioners and management, you guys drive the train. The All Neighborhoods Council is ready. We've had several meetings, and we're ready to start moving on this, and there's many issues that we'd like to bring before you. I would also like to say that I had scheduled a meeting with Steve Archuleta for this Thursday. This is a pre-planning meeting. We have met through several meetings with the All Neighborhood Council and then several email meetings, and we've come up with a blueprint for moving forward. I sent out that blueprint in an email yesterday to three county commissioners. I don't have your email address. I'm about to share that with you. Give it to me. And this is just an idea. It's a starting point on how we can start moving forward with this. And I also acknowledge that the neighborhoods is just one component of the entire community, but it is a very significant component. I think it's probably the biggest grassroots organization that exists in Taos County. These are neighborhoods. There's 11 formal organizations and probably another 11 informal organizations that are in some sort of development. So, the Neighborhood Association is probably the most significant input I think you could have. But then there's also, I'm sure you're going to have a public comment, as you did last time after, you have the neighborhoods input, what they'd like to see going forward. You're going to have public comments. So, there's a, a big process ahead of us as, as far as I can tell. And the meeting that we're going to have Thursday is just to sit down and see if we can find a kind of fine-tune the blueprint. And what I'd like to do, one of the things I suggested to Steve is coming out of this meeting on Thursday, plan for another meeting for Steve and his staff and members of the All Neighborhoods Association so we can finalize the blueprint. These are not secret meetings that we're having behind closed doors, and I certainly welcome any of you to that meeting also, or any, any significant, any person that's interested in having this go forward. So, that's where we are on that, and so we are pushing to go forward on it. And there's many people in the Neighborhoods Associations that you met, Stephen, when we had our last meeting out in Upper Las Colonia's, that are, that are seasoned in this and also ready to move forward. Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
No questions. Why is it that you, you're doing, like you stayed here, doing that? Last time you were here in front of us, you could not give the organization from Rancho, you left the organization.
Yeah, I resigned. And I have to tell you, if you attended some of our meetings, this is one of the biggest problems we have in the organizations. I mentioned this kind of humorously, but we've had people that have died, you know, during, during the process of this. And there's, there's other people, and there are probably two or three spark-up people in each organization that keep it going. And these are people that are very dedicated to having this move forward, but people get very frustrated. One of the biggest problems we have is, and I, Neighborhood Associations that I have discussed with you in the past, is just keeping the interest up. There's, there's not a lot of people that want to dedicate their time and energy for doing this, and we do it, you know, with no monetary compensation, and in fact, many of us are spending a lot of money out of our own pockets doing it. But the neighborhood organizations that existed before still exist in some sort of organization and motivation. But I can tell you very honestly, you know, after the land use regulation was defeated last January, there were many that just outright quit and said, you know, "We're tired of doing this, and I'm going to, in Rancho, so I'm going to have to go back and recruit some new people to get ready a viable organization going again." We had probably 12 members, and now we have maybe down to four active members. But there's other people that come up that are going to step in, as they are in all the organizations. One thing, since I've been in from the start, back when I even forgot his name, the contract planner that you had that came in and helped us develop the plans, do you remember his name? Rick, the contract guy. I can't remember his name. The Dubbing Quest up there.
Dean.
Dean, Charlie Dean. I've been in from that. The, the fabric of the organization has changed a lot. There's probably about 60, 70% turnover from personnel that were involved then, that are involved now. So, people come in and people change.
I have a, I have a question, though, that's been brought up to me. You know, I've been opposed to this because the district that I represent is Caneo and Penasco, and I think in Penasco, it's not needed. Here in Caneo, they were proposing for a two acre, for a house, you know? And there are people that are in the Caneo area that do not have that property there. You know what I mean? So, you know, I've been opposed to it ever since then. But the question has arose in Penasco. See, Penasco, Chelisal, Penasco, Rulo, Seo, Maico, and all that area is included in the reservation. How is this going to play out over there? You know, land use regulations don't have nothing to do with council budgets or with degrees. So, how are this regulation going to come into effect in the Penasco area where it's reservation? See, that's what I don't want to hear.
Well, I think that's probably beyond my...
I think that's, I think that's a question for the planning, you know, for a planning director. Maybe you can add to this.
Yeah, our current land use regs do not cover any kind of sovereign land of Indian product. We have no jurisdiction over Indians.
So, they have what you're telling me. We say this land use regulation does go up, they go up and pass it. Then it don't have nothing to do with the Penasco area, Chelisal, Rulo, Seo, and like that?
If it's Indian land, it's answered, no.
You just answered my question.
Just, just want to comment on that. I think I went out and I spoke to the Talpa community last week, encouraging them to form a Neighborhood Association. And I go out and talk to the grassroots people, and I'm still amazed when I go and speak to people that are, for example, the communities that don't have Neighborhood Associations. We're still dealing with very basic, fundamental questions, and the first one is, why do we even need land, land use regulations? Why don't we just leave things like they are? We're still at that level in many communities, and, you know, without getting into a very extensive discussion on it, I still think that if we're going to succeed, we need to address those basic issues and talk about what's better about having land use regulations than having none at all or leaving it like, like it is. And that's one of the challenges we have, and I do talk to people about, about that. But you mentioned the density area, so many houses per acre and stuff. That's exactly probably the most divisive decision that communities have to make, and it's the one that was the most contentious in Rancho's. You know, how many houses do you want to, do you want to allow to be put on a piece of land? And you try to balance the one stated goal of land use regulations, which is preserving agricultural land, which means having a nice little landscape to look over and having cows and horses in there and not being obstructed with buildings, and balance that with allowing people to build houses on very scarce land that we have. But who's going to make that decision? I mean, it's the people in the community and the neighborhood. Plans allow the local people to make that decision. And it's very different for different areas. In Rancho's, we finally agreed on one house per acre down in the agriculture area and less up in the, what we call rural residential, like on the road to Penasco, Talpa. Out in Upper Las Colonia's, I think they have, you know, they have those big wide-open Chamiso areas, and they have a much higher or lower density. I think they have one, one land description that's one house for 12 acres, you know? But they're happy with that, and who else is going to make that decision except the people that live there? And I think that's the beauty of having these neighborhoods and let them make the decision rather than having, being, the neighborhood being forced to make the decision by land developers, for example, that come in and force those type of decisions on us.
I have another question. Mr. Archuleta, when will you give a land use directive?
We have the advertisement out there. It has closed. I have not looked at the schedule, Commissioner, so that's still, we don't have an actual date of interviews for that at this point.
Because I think that plays a major factor. You've got to have a planning director on board doing it before we start, you know, looking at meetings or whatever. State knows that we have no regulations, so we don't have a planning director.
Well, from where I sit, I'm just telling you that we're ready to assist in that, and I'll be willing to work with the county commissioners and staff in moving that forward. So, you just let us know, and we're here to help.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner? Go ahead.
I don't know if Mr. Bellis has anything that he wants to add to this. I did want to state that we have had several meetings. We have gone to Neighborhood Association meetings and discussed with different people. We do have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, and we've also had a couple of meetings with the town of Taos also. I think that it's important that we bring as many people to the table and discuss all of these situations. My hope is that within 30 days, we would have something for the commission, again, as a roadmap. Mr. Bellis has already started that process. We met last week to, to discuss that. I don't know if you had any comments, but did you want to say about that at all?
Let's go to Mr. Blackenhorn, and then we'll come back to you, Rick. Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. David, I agree, this is a really important issue. Thank you so much for your continued efforts in it. It is a little complicated, but you know, as long as the, the density questions were brought up, as you say, it's, it's such a benefit to the structure that we have planned that neighborhoods can decide that for themselves. But initially, what I believe we're going to address is the land use regulations that affect the entire county, and then the Neighborhood Associations, which create the density limits and which identify permitted uses, are going to come in after that. And, you know, as to the general question, why do we need it at all? Well, we have it. I mean, we already have land use regulations in Taos County, throughout the entire county. The most rural areas, if you want to do a commercial project, you've got to get a special use permit. So, that's sort of off the table. One of the things that I've been doing, because during the campaign, one of, one of the issues, of course, was land use regulations, which I supported, but I said throughout the campaign that I wanted to find out what the particular objections were to the regs that were proposed last January. And so, every Monday night, I've been going up to the Seco Community Center. We've had good attendance there of a wide group of people, and we have come up with five pages of suggested amendments, which I will have... five pages of suggested amendments, which I will have ready to disperse this week, that I think we just approved them last night in a very long drawn-out meeting. And, you know, they are just suggestions from one segment of the population, but a segment that was pretty vocal in their objections to it. And I think they're really useful. I think that there's some recommendations that are going to be well received. The idea is to keep the process as non-restrictive and streamlined as possible without giving up any of the protections necessary. And so to that end, we have come up with these amendments, which I will forward to staff this week and, of course, get to you and all the other neighborhood associations so that there can be further discussion. I wasn't able to open your blueprint. I was doing it on my iPad. Maybe I can do it on my desktop, but in any event, I'm sure I'll get a copy of that. And so, you know, my idea, at least from what I'm doing, is to circulate the work that we've done so far, listen to the work that you've come up with, and then at some point, within the next month or two, staff will hopefully schedule a work study, once planning and legal and neighborhood associations have had a chance to look at some of the suggestions that have been made, and we can begin to debate some of these issues. Frankly, they're not that difficult. And so I do think that we will be able to pass the basic land use regs sometime in the first half of the year. And then it will be exciting to bring in the neighborhood overlays as they've been developed. So...
Commissioner Sanchez. This is the chairman of commissioners, also amazing, you know. I agree with commissioners, you know, we've got people outside of the county, I mean, rural area, my depresia, that, Seco area, that, you know, these people are large landowners. And I think we need to include these people on the decisions that's going to be made. They're the ones going to be impacted by that. You know, we get people that come in by five acres of land, now they want to change everything. And I don't think that's fair for the people who own land for generations and generations. I believe we need to, and I was up at one of the meetings that Commissioner Blankenhorn was with the people up in Seco, and they got a good point, you know? They've got some good concerns, and we need to listen to them, you know? Ranchers, farmers, we've got to listen to those folks. And there's those people up there that's got large parcels of land, you know? It's not fair for them to get somebody coming in and telling them, "Well, you've got to do this." Well, they've been here forever, you know? And another thing, I think we really need to touch on a committee where these folks are sensitive to people who've got, rancher, farmer, and large parcels of land, and not only those, but people that have gotten land down from the abuelos, the fathers, and then they give on. That's our culture. We can't get away from our culture, you know? Our culture's there, we've got to respect it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. And, you know, we worked on this for six years prior, and, you know, I still, I think they put this up there so we dodged the rocks that were being thrown at us during that time. And, you know, I'm a little reluctant to say yes, let's move forward with it, but, you know, like Commissioner Sanchez said, Commissioner Blankenhorn yourself, we need to move forward in these land use regulations because that's how we protect those things. And if we don't move forward with them, we'll never get them protected. And I think, you know, I think Mr. Blankenhorn came up with, well, I don't know if he did, but I think if we, the body of the land use regulations need to come to us, we need to iron those out, and then bring the neighborhood associations back one at a time for adoption. I think, you know, it's going to be a process. I think the first thing we need to do is actually have a work study with us and our land, I mean, our whoever's sitting at that helm at the time from planning, from the planning department, so that we all go and disseminate the information and give it out to the constituents alike, so that there's not some miscommunication. Because, you know, I think we learned a lot from the last time, from the last six years. Let's don't make those mistakes again so that we don't use these as bullet blockers. So I think we really need to, I think that's the first thing that needs to happen, is we need to have a work study between the commission and our staff, and then start disseminating the information.
Commissioner Romano? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of some final words from my end. Really appreciate Mr. Mas's leadership within the neighborhood associations. I think District Three, Rancho Staco, you know, from all these areas, have very vocal people. And I'm very fortunate for these individuals because they all voice their opinions. And as an elected official, very willing to listen to them. And as a county commissioner, Commissioner Sanchez, you know, up in your area, you need to take, if you haven't, you need to take the lead and go out and rile your communities and see what they have to say with regards to the land use reg. Have them come forward and share some of those thoughts. That way, we can all listen to them collectively and make a good decision with regards to the land use reg.
Commissioner Sanchez? Chairman, Commissioner Romano, I think I did that already when my district was District Two and I was in Seco. They did kind of voice their district.
I would just say the one lesson I've learned from the last process we went through is that even though it's very messy and very frustrating, it's the process of democracy, and you have to be inclusive. You have to listen to everybody and get their opinions and try to incorporate them into the decision-making process. And that's the hardest part, because that's frustrating sometimes. It's, if you've been to some of these meetings that we had, and even the hearings we had last January, you know, it's difficult. And feelings run very high, a lot of very sensitive issues. But it has to be done that way. And I think the more inclusive and more transparent we can be about the process, I think the more accepting that the whole community at large will be when we finally come to that magic moment when we cast the vote, God knows when, down the line for adopting land use regulations.
Anything else? Mr. Valdez, I'm sorry, you were going to comment?
Just to repeat something I've said a lot in the last few years, which is that, given the economy, it's a horribly difficult process right now for folks that have owned their land either one day or 100 years to be able to conduct a business on their own property. And we should not be putting a burden on our own people who want to use that land to generate income, which generates taxes and generates jobs. And out of the entire book we are looking at, if we do nothing else, and I think even Commissioner Duran, in the last go-round, had said that, when we looked at some of these communities, we need to do whatever we can, create commercial zones, high recorders, whatever you want to call them, to allow businesses to succeed here.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Chairman, so the last thing I would ask for is that, I know there's some meetings that are going to be happening here pretty soon with our county manager and neighborhood associations, some of them is that we develop a timeline. Will that timeline be afforded to us here within the next couple of meetings that our commissioners have?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as mentioned earlier, we're actually already working on that, just making sure that we have all those meetings spread away, and then we'll also do that work study. At that point, we can really develop some regular guidelines and timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez just, I didn't apologize, Ms. Martinez just said that there also has to be a legal review of these changes, so that's also something that needs to be done.
Commissioners, do you wish to take a five-minute break? Do we have a motion to that thing?
Some of them, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
How for the vote?
Vice Chair Romano.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chair member.
Yes. Second session, we have a second.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Chair Romano.
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chair member.
Yes. Thank you. Resolutions, discussed consideration decision regarding the following, number 2013-4, resolution authorizing the county to submit the application to the Department of Finance Administration, Local Government Division, participating in the local DWI grant and distribution program. Mr. Herbert Valdez, our DWI coordinator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Dr. Lenta, Mrs. Martinez. I'm here to present to you the application for fiscal year 14 for the DWI program. What I really hope for you guys to do is take a vote and see if you're going to accept that resolution so that I can move forward with the rest of the application.
Mr. Chairman.
That might...
I have a question. Remember, we had on page 38, it says over here, safe ride. How much money do you provide for that?
Uh...
So does that have a problem with a safe ride? Because people use their car up and down the road, holding a lawnmower five days a week. The only time they use a safe ride is when they kind of come to the doctor. That's a true fact, no?
Well, this safe ride, if you can, if I may, Commissioner, this safe ride is not intended for that kind of use. What we're talking about, safe ride here, is for people that go to the bars, and they have a little bit too much to drink. And for them not to get a DWI, have to go back home driving drunk, we would provide a service for them to go, to take these safe rides and would take them to their houses.
But then we ask this question, is with that new liability on county, center's off, a gal gets drunk at the bar, the guy providing the safe ride is a gentleman, tries to take advantage of her, or maybe he don't take advantage of her, but she thinks that he did. He definitely provided liability to the girl?
That would probably provide a liability if you look at it that way. But again...
See, just things like this will happen, you know? There's people out there that are trying to put a buck in the bucket, no?
What we're going to propose to do with the safe ride was to have the employees of Taos County actually do the driving of the safe ride because they are already having the safety courses and all that that they have to do for driving. And I don't think that employee would subject themselves to something like this.
Yeah, but it's not like, you know, they would subject themselves, block the lady that picked up, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Who's to say their word against their people, you know what I mean?
Right.
So I don't think that is a good... Not the same ride, not the same ride. See, and then I cannot see, I see you're just going to be providing for services here. You know, Penasco, there are even more bars.
Understandable.
You know, that one ain't going to make. In Questa, there's only a couple. You know, I don't think people from here are going to drive all the way over there just to take somebody two or three miles. So the only people that are going to benefit are the people from here, from Taos itself.
What happens, Commissioner, when a person from Penasco decides to stay at a bar here, and we're offering them to take him to their home in Penasco?
I don't think that happens very often.
Mr. Chairman, I sincerely believe that our DWI program is doing a great job of reducing the numbers of drunk driving on our roads, and I fully support this application. And you have my blessing to move forward, and my motion is to accept and to authorize the county to submit this application on behalf of, to the Department of Finance Administration, Local Government Division, participating in the local DWI grant and distribution program. Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second for discussion? I'll second the motion. Everyone just, have we had this safe ride in the past?
We did it about four years ago, and we were doing it with Traffic Safety Bureau funding. And for the most part, we were getting some ridership at the end, but we didn't get the numbers that we needed so that they could continue funding it. So that's why we stopped at that point. But we've gone through certain, we've already done some surveys around the county this time around, we've talked to the bars, and everybody seems to be in support of this kind of endeavor that we do.
Okay. Then another question, Barbara and our county manager, later in the agenda, under department matters, there's a discussion on a proposed safe ride for Taos County. Is this the same safe ride that we're talking about now? And is, are we, what's the...
It is the same route. It is the same safe ride. The actual proposal, and Herbert could explain this a little bit better than I can, encompasses both of those, but they're, the way it fell down, we have to put that as a discussion item on there so that the community and the commission can discuss.
Okay. I would just, curious about that. Okay, so when we get to that, we'll hear more about that. Commissioner Sanchez? No, no. I have the text on. Yeah. I have the text on. Bring it up.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Candace, yeah?
Could Mr. Valdez explain how that works?
Sure. Mr. Valdez?
Okay. The proposed safe ride that we are proposing is that we operate Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, starting from about eight to about one in the morning. And for anybody that needs a ride, they would call these safe ride people that are working. They would go and pick them up and take them to their houses.
I'll need to get that number for you.
Yeah, me too.
Only the taxes.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Martinez?
You know, I have concerns about this in terms of what the counties are taking, particularly due to the fact that the vision, having county employees drive with us, and I would...
It's not going to be a boss, we're proposing, meaning, in a car.
Okay. Nevertheless, I have my concerns, and I'm wondering if this item could not be tabled until we have the discussion about whether or not Taos County wants to go forward with such a program later on in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, other counties provide the service?
That's true. And in fact, how we were able to get information about the safe ride, it was provided by Torres County DWI program. They also provide a safe ride service. They've been in effect for many years already, doing this thing, and it's been a very, been a very successful program out there.
Mr. Chairman, what other counties provide the service?
I believe that it's, there's several of them. I believe us, Sunnydale offers one, they're pretty successful with theirs also, that are local. I believe that Colfax County has one. All over the state, wherever there's a DWI program, you'd probably find a safe ride program that goes along with it.
But also Albuquerque does?
Yeah, oh yeah. In fact, you've listened to Albuquerque announcing that they're going to have their safe ride programs around the holidays and whenever there's something big going on during the year.
Have you heard that they have run into any problems such as being, are being announced today?
I haven't heard of a single incident that has happened while they were running their safe rides. Nobody has reported anything that I've heard anyways.
Let me ask this question on Ms. Martinez. The liability on the vehicles, and how are these personnel going to pay?
Out of the fund.
If they work their 80 hours, I mean, their 40 hours here at the county, so they're...
They would get paid out of the fund that I'm applying for, Commissioner.
And they would be going double time for that?
Overtime, whatever, that's ten and a half, or overtime if it's a holiday.
And how about the liability on the cars we need?
Those are covered under the county right now, you know, because of coverage.
Usually everybody, the only ones that are out doing anything is the public works and bring the sheriff department. So then, we disagree with another, liability on air insurance?
Mr. Sanchez? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I moved to table this, we can give our county attorney more time to do some research on it. Just one second. There was a motion on the floor, ten seconds, and I, you know, the only way we can go with that is if they withdraw that item. Commissioner... Commissioner, Commissioner Lichten.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I, I'm satisfied with, with Herbert's explanation of the program. It's a self-funding program, it's done in other, successfully in other communities. Life's a risky proposition, there's risks to everything that you do, but I think that this is, um, an important program that can save lives, and so, I, I'm going to stick with my second, and we can put it to a vote once the discussion is over.
Mr. Chairman, discussion. Go ahead.
Uh, I just, I just want to say that I think that Herbert and Mr. Trujillo have put a lot of time into looking at this situation. Taos County, as you know, does not have any kind of public transit, and because of that, and unfortunately, our constituents are more at a liability because of that issue. And what's happened is that a lot of the different businesses throughout the county, and this doesn't only include Taos County, I mean, doesn't include the town of Taos, it includes countywide, uh, there's a lot of people that are out there, I think if the, the stats that we read in here also state that, you know, it has one of the highest levels of DWI, DWI or alcohol-related crashes within the state, and what Mr. Valdez and Mr. Trujillo are trying to do is really curb that, and, you know, I'm not sure how we put a monetary figure on, on one life that we save. Unfortunately, when you're doing prevention like that, it's difficult, because if you save that life and everything goes well, then it, nothing really ever happened, and you can't measure it. Uh, I know that in Vernalio County, uh, they have a lot of different successful programs, they have, uh, programs where they actually tow your vehicle with the driver back to their home, uh, they have safe ride programs, and the only incident that I can, um, think of was that there was an actual taxi service that actually was picking up three individuals from a bar one night, and that taxi service, unfortunately, was still hit by a drunk driver, and the individuals within that taxi service were, were killed, and that's real unfortunate, and I think that we can only do what we can do to prevent it, but I also think that we will put every stop measure in place, and Commissioner Duda had an issue with a female. Well, that's, you know, if we have a female who's intoxicated, then that may require a female driver, that may require two individuals in that vehicle. Part of what Mr. Valdez is also presenting is that there's, this would be a bank service that we could take into the different locations, rather than driving one vehicle to, let's say, Arroyo Seco to deliver one individual, but if we could drop somebody off in El Prado and Arroyo Seco and Los Colonia along the way, then you have several other instances and several other situations. We don't know what the impact's going to be, it's hard to measure that, and what we'll do is continue to update policy and procedures. We definitely have been talking with other counties across the state as to how this program has been successful. And I think the nice thing about what's happened with this program is that now we even have local businesses that are willing to put some money into this to prevent, um, these accidents and these situations from actually happening. The other thing is that, you know, unfortunately, even within our own community and even within Taos County, we've had some individuals that work for us that have received DWIs. Uh, these are individuals that are drinking and driving, and we are trying to promote a safer, healthier environment throughout all of Taos County, and that includes county employees, that if you drink, you don't drive, bottom line. But it's difficult when they live ten miles away and there's no public transportation available to them and no taxi service within Taos County to do that either.
So, Barbara, I have a question. In, in the event, let's say we take a vote and this is, and, and the vote is no, then the DWI program basically has a no vote because of the one issue of the, of the safe ride. Is that correct? So, so basically, then DWI program is kind of dead in the water.
Well, you could make your motion to omit that program.
And, and the reason I'm asking that is because we do have another, this discussion of this proposed safe ride later on in the agenda, and I'm, I'm just going to ask you, Commissioners, if maybe we could table this to hear that and then bring it for a vote at that time. I think it's important enough that, you know, the DWI program is very important to Taos County, but I think there is some serious discussion here by two other Commissioners that I think it's important that we hear what is on the agenda there and then bring that for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, if you can specifically point out the other item.
It's under Department Matters, and it says discussion on a proposed safe ride in Taos County. And, and I just, you know, I think, you know, and that's, yeah, twelve-two, so I just, if we could...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, effort to create some cooperative work here. I will withdraw my motion until later on in the agenda, when we get to listen to the other item, and then at that point, I'll, I'll come back with a motion to support this.
Do we have a motion? I'm just, I have a second. And then, do we want a motion to table?
Do you want, do you want a motion to continue to fund the DWI program absent the safe ride until we're able to discuss that later?
Well, I think, I think we can just table it after twelve-two. We have a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
And how about the second?
I withdraw the second.
I withdraw my second, okay. Now, do we have a motion to table?
So, we'll table, then after the year, discussion on the item on the proposed.
Do we have a motion to table and a second? Further discussion?
No further discussion.
Not a couple of votes.
Vice Chair Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brode.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So, then, we'll go ahead and go on to contracts, agreements, all that used, and bids, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. We're at the quest for approval, a contractor, New Mexico Mountain Contractors, Inc., for the road construction materials, Mr. Rick Fachavas Public Works, and Mr. Malone, Mr. Malone's here, but you're on your own, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, especially with Commissioners, Mr. Malone, Malone over here. This is the materials contract that we've been working on for some time. As you may recall, this was awarded partially to Northern Mountain and, and another portion of it to Medina and Sons, Medina and Sons. That, however, is not coming for you for approval because it's less than twenty thousand dollars. So, this is for you for approval, that portion.
And, Rick, this is the standard contract that we've been doing from year to year, sometimes it's broken up between the three or sometimes...
It's broken up between the low bidders.
Right.
Depending on the item.
Okay. Because sometimes you have a low bidder on some items, and, but, okay. Commissioners, so move for approval. Do we have a second? Finish it. And a second? Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So, I, I just got a little bit of that conversation. What is our mechanism for ensuring that we're getting the best price?
This, this went out the bid for a little bit, so it's competitive. You were the little bidder, depending on one item, then you did low on, so, so he had, he, uh, Northern Mountain got portions of those items, but he had Sons got other items.
And, and those other contracts with Medina and Sons are, have been already approved?
That was less than twenty thousand dollars, so it was required approval.
Okay. And, and these amounts that you're purchasing on the contract, is that going to, how, how long of a time period is, is that satisfying needs?
This goes to the end of the fiscal year, and at that time, or prior to that time, we'll put another bid for a low bid on the same item. So, it's a cycle that we do every day. This is taking longer because of the, the recall and the weight rate decision, we had a hard time with that, other things we put in, in the advertisement that kind of money things up, so I didn't want...
I see. And, and do you, um, do you know how much material you're going to need for all of two thousand and thirteen?
No, sir. We don't know, uh, what kind of material, the amounts of them, depending on what, you know, comes up throughout the year, so, so it's open-ended in that sense, but the money also is just kind of like my best guess of what I may dedicate to materials, because all, what we do isn't just determined, but, so, so it's a, it's a hard thing for bidders to, to submit a bid, because they don't know, and when there's unknown in contract, if you may know there's, you kind of drive the price up a little bit. But it's competitive in that sense, yes.
So, is there any way for you to determine at the beginning of any given year, the approximate amount of all of these various materials that we're going to need and where they're scheduled to, to be placed?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman, and I know that, you know, in the previous meeting, you requested some kind of plan that may kind of try and determine that, and I, I get to put that together, but that might be a, a starting point to try to set some, but, but as things go on throughout the year, depending on the weather, depending on things, you know, different things come up that we need to address. One of the things here, as you may know, this is pavement, you know, we, we just have it there because we don't have a plan to pave any particular road.
I'd sure like to see one. I, I would sure like you to put your experience and effort into giving us a sense of, of what you think are the, the priorities within the county, regardless of the district that they lie in, just based upon safety and traffic and your professional opinion of where those priorities should lie. I would really like to know that. And, you know, to the extent, obviously, a road department in, in Taos County is complicated, and there's got to be some flexibility built into any schedule that you make, but to the extent that you're able to make a, a longer-term schedule, I think that we increase the possibility for efficiency in the department, and so I, I urge you to work on that and get back to us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, and I will, as I said, however, and I try to, in the past, I've tried to prioritize roads, and one of the things that will never propose is to pave roads that aren't drained, and we've done that a lot of times, and that's, that causes problems in the years to come to fix puddles and the like, so, so that will never come for me to do that. Also, as far as priorities, and this pertains more to the Local Women Road Fund, which I will come to you again soon for, for, for your recommendations, and, and as part of that, I'll submit proposals countywide, as I did in the past, I'll submit, not so much proposals, but priorities countywide, priorities district-wide, and then leave it up to you to, to determine how you want to spend that money. But in the sense of county money, I'll, I will try to put that plan together, and the other thing I wanted to mention is there's a fund in, within Public Works, in the special projects, which I was not allowed to include those funds in this contract because, because that was my direction, but that also, I mean, you're going to have to use materials, and the only material we can buy is through here, because I've also been prohibited from, from going with, asking for quotes, getting perhaps a lower bid that's on this, is because we have this contract. So, anyway, the, the point I'm trying to make is, if I knew what those special projects were, then I might be able to, to figure out what materials we're going to use and what, so, you know, I'll wait for you guys to figure out one of those.
Well, I would very much...
You guys don't use it, if you guys don't use that sixty thousand, I don't want to jump on.
Well, I intend, but...
All right, it's, we appreciate it.
Let me just finish my thought here. I would, I would very much like to see you come up with your recommendations to us for these special projects and for you to work with the county manager. You've got a lifetime of experience, you've got expertise on roads, I know Commissioner Dura does also, but you're our guy, you're the head of the Public Works Department, and, you know, you, you're the one capable of making the recommendations based on your image of what's, what's appropriate and what's not. And, you know, we have limited resources, and I just want to do everything that we can do to get the most out of your budget, and I think, you know, and I, and I think with, with you designating the projects and making a long-range plan, we'll be able to approve on that, and so I would, I would very much like to see that, that authority go to the head of the Public Works Department and have you work with our county manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much. Echo the thoughts of Commissioner Blankenhorn, and I think that, you know, we are a, a new commission, and we have to change things around from going from the traditional method of doing things to a more modern way of doing things, and also making sure that our constituency is, is covered with regards to roads. Roads are a major issue, and it is your responsibility as the department head to come to this commission with some of the issues that are out there. I know the fact that we have a lot of bridges that are in need of major repair, and in my district alone, there are at least three or four bridges that need some major repair. Um, and so it would be much appreciated, Mr. Chavas, if you did come forward with some of those ideas. You're, you're out there on a daily basis, you hear from our constituents, and so it is very important to dialogue, to create that dialogue between yourself and our county manager, and then, of course, our county manager's going to let us know as to what it is that, that those needs are. Furthermore, I just kind of wanted you to elaborate a little bit more as to how you came to the decision to, to recommend Northern Mountain Constructors for this particular contract. Do you look at the other vendors, like, you know, Taos, we have quite a bit of them, that provide the same service? Do you have written bids from them with the mounts and stuff like that? You can elaborate on that, I'd really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramo, this is part of the bids, as I said, in the bid, the advertisement for bids includes the items that we'd like price on, and includes the specifications for them, and in most cases, in all cases, while I've been here, we specify the Department of Transportation specifications, um, will be put out, and we did, did proposals from Medina and Sons, Northern Mountain, Mascareñas, Inquesta, um, who else? The Hills. So, so yes, and, and in fact, Mr. Chairman personally, I called and said it's been, been advertised in the past, they've missed them, they don't know they're, they're out there, so, so because we want the best price from what competitive bids, from what people bid on it, so yeah, we, we go all over, more than just advertise and pick by column personally, say this time this.
So, these, whoever submitted those bids, they're all on paper, they're all...
Yes.
So, if we were to ask for these bids, would be...
Bid tabulations are available, they're not included in your package, I suppose, but they can be reviewed.
Very good.
And as far as bridges, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you know, we've had this discussion before, there are several bridges in Taos County that are posted for weight limits, and that is a result of, of the condition of the bridges. There are some recommendations for the DOT to, to make repairs, which are perhaps a little bit out of our expertise. So, in this year's budget, there's professional services money to get someone to put together a small, uh, professional services or a contract for people who know that, how to do that, to repair the bridges and everything, those, those weight limits on, so, we are intending to get that out and repair the bridges.
Okay. Oh, we do have a motion on the floor, and we do have a second. Any further discussion? Uh, Rick, before you leave, before we take a vote, before you walk away, I know there's a number of constituents, and I believe they belong to Tom Blankenhorn, mostly to Tom, but some of them might be one or two in my district, where Verbolago flows across northern Los Colonia and floods that area down there. That drainage in that area, I know the water comes off of mine and floods his, and I had a number of constituents ask me if, if the soil and water was going to, if there's anything we can do in that area, so maybe, I don't, not right now, so we don't take up a bunch of time, maybe the three of us can get together and see if we can address that. I know it's been an ongoing issue in the past, and, and I know that Peter has said he's willing to help, but I don't know if there's a plan or, you know, I, but let's see if we can sit together and see if we can come up with something.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, there from Verbolago around the corner there on Northern Los Colonia, you know, all that water comes from the roads, you know, that have been developed and come down the road right into our road, and there's nothing on, on our county road to, to convey the water across. So, in order to do that, we have to put structures, plus we also have to get easements from the adjacent landowners to, to be able to allow the water to flow through their property. It may have been so in the past... It may have been so in the past, but since the road has been developed and, and also development as far as residential, uh, in the residential sense, we've kind of created our own problem that's, that's the remedy. We need to convey the underground, I mean, under the road and then across the private property.
And on, at one time, there was an agreement, uh, because there's always big holding ponds down in the middle of it, and there was an agreement at one time during that, uh, disaster, uh, that they actually allowed us to, like, you know, or divert the water, flowing through those holding tanks. But I know that was for a short term, but again, that's why I said maybe there's, can be some kind of solution where we can come up with, um, for the long range, uh, so, you know, and just putting it out there, maybe we can get together and discuss that. We don't need to do it today.
And Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask you, are those dikes, are those for, for runoff or for privacy or sound, sound better?
Those actually, they actually used to hold water. They used to use them for irrigation and for, uh, for cattle and, and the sheep that used to eat in that area. So I, I, and now, you know, somebody owns it, that's totally different, and the use is totally different. So I, I don't know, but I believe, uh, Scott Sanger is the attorney that I think has some kind of, uh, help over those properties, so maybe we can speak with him.
Mr. Chairman, and, and, uh, before I leave, and I, and I brought it up in our next, my next agenda item, but I meant, I could have mentioned it earlier on the LGRF, the next cycle for that. As you sit there, you know, and I will come before you with recommendations, but think, you know, about roads that you want. We'll be getting about a hundred ninety, two hundred ninety thousand dollars again, it's flat from last year. So two hundred ninety thousand countywide, so think about what you might wanna propose to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chavez.
So call for the vote.
Vice Chair Meda.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Stan.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Commissioners, was your wishes to go to lunch, or do you wanna continue on? Is there somebody in the audience that you think we need?
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, so that we don't waste our whole morning, uh, if there's staff that needs to be heard, uh, listen to them, uh, tomorrow with the lunch hour. Uh, Mr. Chavez, I believe, do you have another item, Mr. Chavez?
How far down is it?
It's, uh, thirteen A one.
Thirteen A one. We'd have to amend the agenda. Let me just, let me just hit a couple of these real quick. Barbara, next is item B, consideration of the understanding of ancianos. Is this an item that you were wishing to have the, uh, association of counties attorney present that?
That, that would be helpful, although I, I have put a written email in the agenda item. Uh, he is going to be here at one thirty, that's the other key.
I mean, what's your recommendation?
Let's just wait.
Okay, so on, on this item, Commissioners, you, uh, item B, nine, I mean, eleven B, do we have a motion to table that? Please.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, uh, call for the, or discussion, is there any discussion? Not call for the.
Vice Chair Meda.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Item C, ratified contract with Mr. Richard Bellis, uh, F B County Manager, and Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item eleven C is a contract that the, uh, county manager has signed with, uh, Richard Bellis for employment. You'll recall in the last meeting, county manager was given authority to negotiate an agreement, and, uh, the chairman was consulted, uh, as those negotiations progressed and before Mr. Archuleta signed it. But because it is an employment contract, we would ask the board of county commissioners to ratify that at this time.
Our discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Why is it that we have a contract for this position? Uh, the other position we would give a contract for, with our manager and county authority.
I think, Commissioner, I think Commissioners, that were the, uh, at the, uh, I guess, during the discussion under, um, legal matters, I guess, uh, direction was given and authorization was given, is that correct?
Um, we did notice on page seven, in section twenty-four E, uh, second sentence, it says, "This agreement is entered at the insistence of the employee." And if you go back to the term of this agreement, you'll see that, which is on page one, it said, "The term of this agreement shall be one year from the date indicated above. At the end of the term, employee shall return to his prior status as an at-will-employed contractor," which means without a contract. So, uh, Mr. Bellis was seeking, um, some security for the next year by virtue of this contract, but understands that at the end of that year, he will, uh, go back to being an at-will-employed without contract.
Commissioner Sanchez. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also Barbara, get a question on page seven.
Mm-hmm.
And B. Upon execution of this agreement by the parties of choice, we remove a written reprimand dated November nineteen twenty twelve from employee's personnel file. Um, I'm not comfortable with that. That kind of throws our manager off course, because he's the one that's, that does what he does, and we put him in that position to, to run it, run the county. And taking that off, how many others have taken reprimands off? Or is this just this one?
Um, this is the only one that I'm aware of, Commissioner Sanchez. But I will say that, uh, Mr. Bellis was able to discuss the matter of that reprimand with the county manager, or I believe the county manager was satisfied with the explanation that he gave, which is why he agreed to remove that from his personnel file.
I think in the past, we had one gentleman that wanted this one removed, and it was never done.
Under our personnel policies, uh, after eighteen months, any employee can request that a reprimand or be removed from his personnel file. It must, that must be approved by the department head, but it, it's not without precedent.
And, and Commissioners, I just wanna remind you that this was, um, contract or this agreement was made to mitigate the possibility of a lawsuit. Uh, and I just wanna remind you, I think this, that's why we're here today, and that's, and this, I think, with the terms and conditions or the, or the realm that we gave to our, to let the, in the negotiation process. So I just wanna make that statement.
Mr. Chairman, just to comment, anybody that's got any written reprimands, I suggest you write in the poll. This way this commission don't play my favorite piece of.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Blankenhorn. Thank you. Um, well, I think our direction was clear after last meeting, and I thank staff for negotiating the contract with Mr. Bellis. I welcome Mr. Bellis back. I, I feel as though, uh, he's gonna help us in, in a lot of different ways, and we can get more done with him than without him. And, uh, I'm glad to have you back on board, assuming that his passes, and I'll make a motion to accept this contract as written, uh, thanks to, again, legal staff and, and, uh, Mr. Archuleta for your good work in, uh, in negotiating this contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion, and I, I too wanna echo some of what Commissioner Blankenhorn said. Uh, there's a lot of work ahead of us, there's a lot of things that we need to, uh, accomplish for our constituents, and our county manager is making every effort to get the, the right staff on board, and Mr. Bellis is, is a good example of that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion and a second, comfortable?
Vice Chair Meda.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
No.
Commissioner Duran.
No.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. So Commissioners, do we have, uh, a motion to move up item, um, thirteen, thirteen A one?
I will second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, is that the correct one, Mr. Rick? Yes, sir. It's, uh, so, uh, call for the vote.
Vice Chair Meda.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. So we'll go on to question, matter, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following DFA resolution. Um, Ms. Dana Brand, um, DFA Resolution Number Thirty, a resolution requesting to adjust F life twenty thirteen final budget for transfer cash from the Taos County Grant Match Fund.
So it's DFA Resolution Number Thirty, as presented, and what it is, it's the new grant agreements for the, uh, the Mexico car transportation, the, uh, cap, co-op, and, uh, school bus agreements. And each of them, if you look at the resolution, do have a county match. And so we're asking that the county match be transferred from the, uh, grant match fund.
So, Mr. President. We have a motion and a second, um, and this, we're discussing, uh, this is money that we budgeted, correct? And we budget money every year.
We never know how much the match is gonna be, we always know it's gonna be about twenty-five percent, but we never know what the agreement amount is. So we do put in money into that, um, grant match fund, and you'll see that it's also in your packet as part of the resolution, and it does show there that, uh, we do have that, the match available.
Okay, um, any further discussion, Commissioners? Not call for the vote.
Vice Chair Meda.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask, uh, Rick, one question? Sure. Um, it's, uh, these, these co-op agreements are to improve various roads. Both of, uh, they're all written, uh, described as various roads. Can you tell us what roads they are?
That's what I asked, do you folks consider?
Oh, I said, how are we going to spend this cap, co-op, school bus money?
And when I say LGRF, the local government road fund, which includes cap, co-op, and school.
Wait, uh, Mr. Chairman, I.
Uh, let me just, let me just. But you're gonna bring your rec, your specific recommendations to us on how you think best to spend these nights?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, in this cycle, twelve thirteen, those roads have already been identified.
They have?
They have been.
Can we get a list of those roads?
Uh, I can recall what they are, I think, uh, school roads in District One, I think that's gonna take up all of the available funds, at least a fifth of the share. Um, no, we will continue on Sunshine, actually, the base course. We were gonna do County Road One Ten, continuation. That's, that's a way of a group bond between District One and District Three. And then yours was, um, continuation of Laura Hondo.
Okay, so we each get a road. And, and, um, how was it determined?
You all determined what road you want.
Each, each Commissioner determined, picked a road, and, uh, that's how it was determined.
Right, and, and as I said before, I came with priorities, and Commissioners from District One and District Three kind of took that up and said we wanted to pool the funds for, for County Road One Ten, and that's what's been, we've already got two cycles on that road, two cycles on Laura Hondo. This will be the second cycle on Sunshine, and District Five is ahead of the road.
This is the second cycle on C One Ten, correct?
Third.
I'm just trying to figure out how it all works, but I think I get it. When, when is the next one coming up?
Next one, Mr. Chairman, I'll probably, I will be before you on the third, whatever the next commission meeting is, uh, with resolutions, and you wanna participate. Uh, I think we have to identify that time preliminarily, what road you wanna improve. So I'll have resolutions, I'll have letters, uh.
And recommendations.
And recommendations to you, as priorities.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we'll try and pick on one more item, so that, well, maybe she has to come back after lunch, but. Department managers, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following, uh, selection of a certified environmental official for two thousand thirteen CDVG, uh, project application, and the PPI grants administrator.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, typically in the past, uh, we have utilized Mr. Chavez as our, um, engineer of public record on the roads, so, so he always acted as our certified environmental official. But this year, since our application is going to be for a construction project, and they have tightened some of the rules and regulations for our, uh, environmental official, uh, we discussed it with County Manager Archuleta, and we feel that he would probably be the best, um, pick for, for this, for this puzzle right here. So he would be signing off on any environmental letters that have to be sent out to the different entities, and, um, that's why we picked him, 'cause he's right here.
Room for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second, Mr. Archuleta, you're willing to do this?
Comes with the job.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Chair Meda.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yeah.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes.
Commissioners. Can I ask Anita a question about the CDVG project real quick? Um, Anita, so I, I keep getting different signals here, but the last I heard was that the town had gotten a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to, uh, perform, uh, design work on the old courthouse.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, I don't believe it's the design work, I believe it's the structural engineer, um, report, is what I was told.
And Commissioner, on our next meeting, uh, they'll be coming before us to, to present that. So then, you know, we can ask them questions, uh, so that, you know, if they get it done, so we can get that expedited, so that we can use it in the market.
So, uh, so yeah, the structural engineer report would be, would be handy, but, uh, we, we would still need to go out with our RFP for design to determine how we're gonna spend that CDVG money.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, um, typically when we have, uh, a project of this scope and an architect that has been named of record for the old county courthouse, which is David Henry, uh, DFA has stated that we can use him. He has already done a ton of work on, um, uh, cost estimates, and, and, and he was, I wanna thank him because even though we haven't, we don't have a contract in place for him, he was able to give me a lot of information that I'm going to incorporate in my application, to show DFA that while this isn't really a shovel-ready project, it's a step above some of the other projects that are gonna go in for application.
Is, is it gonna be possible, are you gonna need the board's, uh, input on this? Or is, is it gonna be possible for, uh, your department to structure the RFP in such a way as to require, uh, the design work to, uh, spend the four or five hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, within a year's time and get the, uh, fresco room open? And maybe get, uh, the two bottom, uh, rental places that have window access to the, the plaza, maybe get them in a position to where they could be rented out? Is, is that, is that possible to structure the RFP in that way, that specifically?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, we would love to be able to take over the RFP, but this document is something, since it is federal funds, that is actually drafted at the state level, and we get to put in all of, all of our information, it's, it's about a hundred ninety-six page document. Um, so, I mean, there is not a problem with us specifically putting in language to that effect, um, if, if that's the, the wishes of the commission.
And is that something you're gonna have to bring before the commission? You know, obviously my concern is that this doesn't stretch out any years, and we lose four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars every year. And so obviously, this building can take millions of dollars, but if, if we can get it focused and phased, um, to where we can at least get that beautiful room open and maybe some commercial rental spaces, and then get another five hundred thousand dollars next year, that would be so good.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, we always try, and especially with CDVG funds, expedite them. Um, I did have a conversation with, uh, the chairman earlier. Typically, it takes two years to spend these funds because of all of the federal mandates that we have to abide by. There is an environmental review that we have to go through, the CDVG application, of course. We will not even get fund approval or, uh, a notice of award until probably, um, I'm, I'm thinking June of this year, uh, with a, uh, the award. of this year, with a, the award, the grant agreement will come to us sometime in August or September. The 196 draft RFP that we have to finish drafting here at our level also has to go to other entities to be approved. I mean, it's a long process. The construction process alone might only be six weeks, but trying to get it to that point takes a lot of effort and a lot of paperwork.
I understand that, but, you know, in addition to the time, it's a question of making sure that we have enough money to complete what we're, what we are seeking to complete. We don't, we don't obviously want a situation like Amalia where you invest 400 grand and then you don't know where the last 400 grand is coming from, so.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, on top of that, I was wondering if we could possibly schedule a site visit of the old courthouse. I'm sure the commission has looked at it. I don't know about recent, but it would be good if staff and public, if they wish to do so, be allowed a site visit. I know that there are a lot of concerns on the plaza, but also the rest of the community and the county is very concerned. Definitely one of our priorities to make sure that the courthouse is redone, rebuilt, remodeled, so that it is open once again to, for public use. So, Mr. Chairman, our county manager could possibly fit that into a work study or some sort of, or regular meetings whenever he wants to, so that we can all go out there and look at it and assess for ourselves what the issues are.
I think, Commissioner, we can probably do that as a field trip. You know, during one of our regular meetings, I know that we, on January sixth, we had a CDVG grant. Part of the thing was to open up the old county courthouse and let people come, and there were very few people that showed up. I know me and Anita and Mike, and there might have been a couple other people that showed up, you know, very few people. But it might have been because of the holiday and stuff that was going on, but I think, yeah, that's a good idea, so maybe we can schedule that.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, please do not schedule that before February 15th, because that's when our grant application is due. So we have a lot that, you know, we're trying to get that application completed and all the stuff that I need to get that goes with it. So, but that, I do not believe that would be a problem setting up a meeting such as that.
Now, do you already call for the vote?
Yes.
Okay. So Commissioners, we have a motion to break for lunch. Hour and five minutes, or ten minutes?
Okay.
Some more, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Edel.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran. Chairman Brody.
Yes. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion. Come back. And a motion and a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Chairman Edel.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Commissioners, I know we had a couple of table items, but where we're at right now is a discussion on the full safe ride, and then we'll bring back the couple items that were tabled in motion. So we'll go ahead and move on, because as Department of Matters, so a discussion on the full safe ride for Taos County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. George, Mrs. Marcellus. Again, we were discussing about the Safe Ride program. This second part has to do with wanting to start the Safe Ride program as soon as possible. I was able to allocate some funding from the state for Safe Ride program in this fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman? You want to propose as soon as possible? I'm just, as we were talking about, there's a drive, is there?
Yes.
Well, since, yeah, Mr. Coleman in here, I would like to ask him some questions. On this safe ride that they're proposing to us, I tabled this matter, I was wishing they did well this matter this morning. What's the potential liability?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not exactly sure how the program would be structured, because I know, for example, I think in Santa Fe County, they actually do a voucher program where the county has a contract with a commercial taxi company, and so the taxi takes care of the ride. I'm not sure how you're proposing to set it up. Would it be Taos County vehicles, Taos County employees?
Yes.
Right? Well, if that's the case, obviously, the county has liability under workers' comp and under general liability. So if something happened to an employee, the employees would have to be, make sure they're properly insured, properly trained, properly licensed. And then we have to see, the Association of Counties would have to take a look at how many vehicles we're talking about. You, obviously, there's always some risk when you're dealing with people who are inebriated, so that's something that people would have to be properly trained, I think, then, in order to decide when to take somebody in the vehicle, when not to. And that's all a training process also.
How about the potential of liability?
Well, you know, worst case, obviously, somebody gets into an accident, the county, if there's negligence on the part of the driver, the county has that liability.
How about sexual harassment?
That would be for the county driver and the county employee at the same hand. So there are exposures, there's no question, there are legal issues involved.
And with this, on the insurance, the premium go up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I would say it probably would, but we have to see, like I said, how many vehicles are involved, how often the service is going to be used, but there probably would be a supplemental premium involved.
And under the insurance, the association, say, under sexual harassment lawsuit, how much would, insurance would be liable for, how much would, tell me.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if there was a sexual harassment claim against the county employee, the county would have coverage on that. I believe there's a $5,000 deductible, and then the coverage would be under the tort cat, if it was a tort claim, would be up to $1,500,000.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other question, Commissioners Sanchez? Chairman Commissioner, Mr. Coleman, I'll see that he mentioned the taxis that implemented in another area. Does those folks, what happened, is that Santa Fe, correct?
It's the Chairman, Commissioner, that's correct.
Okay. So it's Santa Fe, and if they go with another business, a taxi company to do it, the taxi company would be the ones liable, or not county, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there probably would be liability on both parties, but what the county, my understanding is the county has contracted away a lot of the risk by contracting with that third party. So that that third party then would be responsible for accidents and the like, and there would probably, probably a provision in the contracts that if the county sued for the negligence of the taxi company, that the county would actually be provided a defense and would be indemnified.
And also, I've supported, I heard on the DWI program, this one kind of bothers me, because when we start taking people, you know, what's been mentioned, Mr. Coleman, that's, it's really serious, you know, for the county. You have a lot of building lawsuits, I'll go take care of that, it's another issue.
Mr. Chairman, when you said about vouchers, what, the cap company just, their rates are like regular rates, or how do they?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I believe the county contracted for a pretty cut rate for these people. So the county's paying, contracting with this taxi company, they're supplementing, I think they have probably state funds that they're providing the company to be able to offset the cost of the ride.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Blankenhorn? Thank you. Steve, I know you probably don't, I'm sure you don't have these numbers off the top of your head, but it wouldn't be possible for us to see how other counties who utilize this program, how their premiums were affected? Is there any chance of getting that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not sure that there, I know that Grand County had a program for a short period of time. I'm not aware that there are many counties that actually sponsor that program.
There is.
Are there? So, you know, from our standpoint, it'd probably be easier for us to just find out how many vehicles you're discussing, how many employees, what kind of hours, and we could probably do some quick underwriting and get your number.
Thank you.
Commissioner, with that being said, I think, this needs a little bit of research. If not, they put up a cap company, and you could be afraid of how much they're going to take you.
Go ahead, Mr. Bellis.
Mike's not here, so there's something I did want to mention about this, that he and I were working on. One of the first places this idea came about, and I hope we wouldn't exclude it, is that with the Nisa Brewery opening and having a rather large venue that can have music events and other stuff, because they're, especially this perimeter also loves and have outdoor events. And then we have K-Town right up the road, and then we have Marquina's reopened as a dance hall and a music venue, which he intends to use. One of the things we went around and discussed with these individual establishments was the idea of bringing more tourism to Taos, because it's a stop on the way between Austin, Texas, and Boulder and Denver, Colorado, and groups are often just trying to pick up a night on the way. So we thought about the idea of actually having, twice a year maybe, to start with, a music event like Austin does, that every venue in the county has special entertainment booked. And the hotels were all in for that. The businesses that provide the music were all in for it. The only thing we really had a concern about was that people getting from venue to venue. And I think there's a really successful model nationally where people buy their ticket through the hotel, online, they leave their keys at the hotel, and then transportation is provided for them between the events. And, you know, if this needs more research, we certainly could look into that, but it is a successful model, and I think, as there are other types of festivals we're going to hold, it really is a model that helps reduce the liability of the county of us having to chase people that are drinking, people that are in crashes, the overtime that's put in for having to secure the scenes. Maybe a way to limit the liability is to use a third-party vendor to be the actual person providing the transportation. And another twist to that also is that if you work out the program, State Division Alcohol Gaming runs a special course for servers that run establishments with alcohol, that they're supposed to notice when those people need assistance. And some of the more successful programs nationally have the server have to make a call to the service to line that person up, so that you know they're in need of it, but he also knows that that person isn't going to pose a danger because they haven't been acting out, picking up a fight, getting violent, nasty with everybody for the two hours before then. So rather than turn it down if you, if that's the way the vote goes, I'd ask you to keep your mind open, so that we could come back with a plan that would maybe address some of your concerns.
Anything else on this, Herbert?
Other than saying that I think that saving a life by providing a service like this is better than having somebody buried. A loved one buried. It could happen to you, it could happen to me, it could happen to anybody, and it's happened before.
But then, Mr. Chairman, also a motion.
Yep. Just a second, because we're just discussing on the full safety right for Taos County, so we'll, when we bring that, the item 11A back, and, I'm sorry, not 11A, it's 10A, so.
Commissioner, on this, I think we need more research, you know? I'm not about to put something like this in place right now without knowing the liability that the county can have. And I know it's a good program, but right now, I don't know what it would cost, you know, or what potential liability we could have.
And one second. And Herbert, basically, this program is paid through grant funding?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is there any of that grant funding that pays for the insurance portion of this?
We could make it pay for it if we like.
And I know, just, Mr. Blankenhorn? Yeah, so really, the only cost that I see to the county is the potential for increased premiums. And it's probably more than a potential, it's probably a fact, as Mr. Coleman stated, that there would be some increased premiums. And Mr. Bellis made a good point that, you know, if it's a program that increases safety and mitigates drunk driving, you can end up saving those premiums on law enforcement end, and it's impossible for us to calculate precisely what the cost is going to be. There's obviously some benefits to the community for this program. Herbert, what's your deadline on this?
February 15th.
February 15th, so if we don't make a decision in favor of it by February 15th, then it's not going to happen for another year, is that the case?
Well, the whole grant and everything is up for February 15th. I don't get that, but I think by February 15th, the program goes away, a whole big up by program.
But we could decide to vote in favor of the program minus the?
Yes, it can.
Yes, okay. So maybe, maybe I agree with Commissioner Duran that if we could get some more information between now and February 15th about what the approximate increase in premiums would be, that that would be helpful. Obviously, you know, the board is in favor of the DWI program, we're not going to let that go away, so we're just talking about this ride portion of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, as Rex stated, you know, yeah, businesses are willing, they have it, they're going to make the money, you know? Out selling later, I love it. We're the ones going to be left with liability, you know? And I agree with Commissioner Blankenhorn, you know, let's go forward with the DWI program. We've got behind us that, that Safe Ride. You know, I think we need to have Ms. Marcellus do some more research on that, and I agree with Commissioner Duran, I think we don't want to get ourselves caught in something that we can't get out of, and then it's going to pay, it's going to be, they pay off for somebody, it's not for us.
Let me ask this other question, Mr. Chairman. When this, other places are having events, how many safe rides you going to have out there?
Our original plan is to have two vehicles out that need burning in a car.
Let me ask you this question, now, when these people are having others, because there's breweries are having events, and there's somebody else that, no cars. Maybe there's one guy out there, no cars. How are you looking for our tight speed to take them?
It would probably have to be by phone call, or how they contact us first. I think that that's the only way we could make it work for now. I mean, you can't put our tires from over there to over here, it's just by phone call and the police service first.
But if you get the phone call at the same time?
Maybe tell us a quarter.
Mr. Bellis?
See, you got to be fair across the board, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because you got to put, you got to have these in place, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest something, compromise that would address the concerns of the commissioners up here, reduce the liability, still get the benefit, they'll need to start working on the grant. And that is, in speaking to Mr. Coleman, I asked him if we don't provide the service, if all we do is take a portion of this grant for prevention, and we underrate the fee, sort of like we do with engine care. We don't have a liability to engine care because we don't provide any medical services. All we do is underrate it. And this money would become the encouragement to then force somebody who has those vans available. And we know there's a number of them, because... available, and we know there's a number of them, because...
Good morning, everyone, and we want to welcome everybody out to our regular meeting of Tuesday, January 2nd, for the record, is 9:06. If you'll call roll, please.
Commissioner Brody.
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
Commissioner Omedo.
Present.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Present.
Commissioner Duda.
Present.
Thank you. Candace, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Candace. Commissioners, approval of agenda, withdrawn items. I know that, I think we have Mr. Coleman from the Association of Counties coming in later on, but we'll address that as if he arrives. I know he wanted to speak to us, I believe, under the legal matters, executive session, so if, depending on what time he shows up, maybe we can move that item up on the agenda. Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Commissioners' reports and matters, possibly we could include another item. I know that I came in with a report of the Mexico Association of Counties conference that we had last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and part of Thursday, and definitely want some input from other elected officials that were there. But under item C, Mr. Commissioner, if we could possibly include discussion of the land use regs, how we can put that on track on schedule, so that we can start looking forward to that discussion. I know that we have one member from the community, Mr. David Myers, with the Rochester Taos County Association. So, it would be great, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if we can start talking about that against, if we can put it on the schedule.
Anything else, commissioners? If not, we have a motion for approval as amended.
I salute Mr. Chairman.
We have a second? Second. And a second. No further questions, call for the vote.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Go ahead and move on to citizens' concerns, discussion, consideration regarding the following. And we do have a number of people here from the Piñasco area, and they would like to speak to us, so we'll allow you five minutes apiece. Whoever wishes, if you'll just state your name for the record.
Thanks so much. Hello, morning, Commissioners Langues, Pam Fernandez, and I'm from Piñasco. We're all here today to speak to you about the indigent fund issue with Taos County, with Holy Cross Hospital, and my presentation is just to really ask you that you not put this issue on a fast track for a vote. I don't know what your plans are, I'm not sure if you're going to be voting on that issue soon, but it would be really, really, really helpful for all of the citizens in Taos County if you could get some more public input on this. There are so many diverse issues about the indigent fund. One of them that I know that's happening in 2013 is many of the citizens in our counties are going to, the part of the Affordable Care Act is going to begin to be implemented in 2013, and a lot more people are going to be qualified under Medicaid for their hospital and medical bills to be paid, and this is going to directly impact Holy Cross's revenue. There are just, more people are going to be insured because of the Affordable Care Act. The other thing is, you know, I, Holy Cross is, individuals, if the indigent care flows just to Holy Cross, won't be able to get services paid outside of, you know, if they have to go to cancer care in Santa Fe, or heart health care in Albuquerque, and that's going to really, really directly impact individuals who, from my perspective, it looks like the working poor, people who are working, but, you know, don't qualify for Medicaid, who are working, but can't, really would be financially devastating for a large, for something that happens, a big issue, you know, like a heart attack, that can't be taken care of here at this hospital, you know? So, please, don't put this on the fast track. Please, let's look at every single issue regarding our citizens. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Yes, excuse me, can I ask a question? So, the hospital may not be aware that the possibility that the Affordable Care Act would increase coverage to 38% from the current levels, I can't remember what they are, and so, you know, we're encouraged by that, and we understand that that's part of the formula. We do have to make a declaration to the state in February as to what our contribution is going to be, and so we're going to deal with that. We had a good work study, we've got, we believe we've got sufficient funds within the budget to take care of most of the hospital's needs in regard to that declaration, and so there's no immediate plans to consider of mill levy. But your request for us to slow down is based on what beyond what I've just described?
My concern is based on looking at every aspect of the issue, looking at the impact on actual individuals that are going to be impacted by this.
By what?
By, it's my understanding that the hospital is asking for 100% or close to it of the indigent funds that are available.
As opposed to splitting some of that cost with, or...
As opposed to...
Providing some of that to other hospitals?
As opposed to the indigent funds following the individual.
To other hospitals?
To other hospitals or healthcare providers, such as cancer treatment, such as trauma, you know, that are not taken care of at Holy Cross.
It was my understanding that there was maybe $39,000 there, Mr. Archuleta, that we had previously been paying out to other hospitals?
That's correct.
So, it's not a huge amount, the $39,000 is a very small portion of all the dollars that we're looking at, so we appreciate that heads up.
Very small amount. I agree with you, it is.
As it pertains to our budget, not individual lives, but, so, thank you for that heads up, we'll consider that. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Good morning, my name is Amanda Whistle, I'm also from Piñasco. I, there's a letter, you actually got two things from us, and I wanted to read the letter, also just for everybody who's in the chamber today to hear more of the concerns. I think you're right, Mr. Blankenhardt, even asking about what exactly are the concerns, how do we think that indigent fund will impact individuals in terms of, I think our case is that we think dollars should follow the individuals, not necessarily a facility. And I think it's, I want to say, I'm currently studying for my master's of public health. I really, really think that access to care should be of highest priority. I think it would be fantastic for Holy Cross to become a sole care provider. That would really bring a lot of benefits to this county. My concern is how the county decides to find those matching dollars. I think that's really the question the county commission should look at, is what is the best method, what is the best method to find those matching dollars? So, I think that's one of my points of view. So, just to read the letter, "Dear Taos County Commissioner's staff, we understand that healthcare system in the Taos County is facing challenges. We are here today to offer our assistance and support for overcoming those challenges. We were discouraged to read last week that the Taos County was one of the top 50 rural counties with an increase in poverty between 2007 and 2011. This is a national study that came out to look at how many more people came into poverty, and Taos County was the only one listed from New Mexico that increased poverty from 2007 to 2011. We all feel the effects of the economic downturn every day. We see the homes for sale and closed businesses. This is the time to come together, but with honesty, transparency, and accountability, to plan for the economic, to plan for an economy better buffered from cycles of build and bust, an economy designed to benefit of los angeles. This is why we are not in support of more tax dollars being provided to Holy Cross Hospital until such time as they provide 100% honesty, transparency, and accountability to the people of the county, and also to the commissioners, as it is a county hospital. U.S. commissioners must be able to examine the books along with the public, only then will an informed and fair decision be possible. We are here to make the following recommendations. One, delay any decision regarding the indigent fund until more information is available. Do not be rushed into a decision. The full impact of such a decision on the health and well-being of county residents should be thoroughly studied and understood. Secondly, convene a blue ribbon commission of citizens from throughout the county to study the healthcare system as a whole, which includes the hospital. Convene at least three public meetings in the county to gather public input. The study report should address, at a minimum, the benefits of the implementation of the Affordable Care Act next year, and the company reduction in uncompensated care through increased rates of insurance. Secondly, a comparison of various rural hospital management models to determine if a contracted corporate for-profit management scheme, which we have under quorum, is really the best model for care for our Taos County residents. A comparison of various rural hospital programs to determine another type, such as critical access hospitals, more sustainable for Taos County. A blue ribbon commission study and public meeting had a central role in gathering information and public opinion to move forward with the bond issue that built the hospital. So, there is a precedent in Taos County for convening such a meeting. Thirdly, of our recommendations, that the county indigent fund adopt a policy clearly stating the indigent fund dollars for the benefit of the eligible persons, not to the benefit of a particular facility, especially one which does not and cannot meet all the healthcare needs of Taos Angeles, as Pam Fernandez was highlighting. And lastly, that Taos County and the public study the examples of Santa Fe County and others, which have run into trouble with the federal government as a result of after-the-fact expenditure adjustments to the Mexico Sole Community Hospital lens. I'm not sure how many of you follow what happened with Santa Fe Hospital, but they were using indigent funds to match with the Sole Community provider, and now they're having to reimburse them because the federal government said that wasn't a match, that they couldn't use those dollars. Maybe you're aware of that already, but I think that also needs to be taken into consideration. Again, we're here as concerned citizens who really truly care about the health and well-being of all residents of Taos County, and this isn't so much saying, don't support Holy Cross, we need to support our hospital, but we really need to look at the best model for the county and its residents, and make sure that those matching dollars are coming from a sustainable place. Thank you.
Thank you for your research and your comments. Thank you. Ms. Jean?
Yeah, Jean Nichols from Piñasco, and, you know, thank you very much for allowing us to, you know, have this time. Most of what I was going to bring up has already been brought up, and I've given you a letter that, you know, I was just kind of shocked to see the ad in the, I mean, the article in the paper last week, and then I read one of the comments, which was really good, the same thing that they have said about, you know, that the indigent fund should follow the people instead of the facility, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of other things. Just last week, or maybe the week before, at a UNM staff meeting, Peter Hofstadter was there, and he stated, and I quote, because, well, somebody gave me this quote, I wasn't at the meeting myself, "Holy Cross is in good shape, there's money in the bank, and we have no debt." Well, that's confusing to me when they've been coming and saying that they have a $10, $10 million shortfall, and so I wonder what's the truth in that, and if they are in good shape, are they in good shape, or do they have, you know, this shortfall? And how are we supposed to know or believe anything without looking at open books? Also, I remember when the mill levy thing came up earlier this year, the commission again, after years of asking, you know, asked if somebody from the commission could be on their board, and I wonder, is somebody on the board now, or, you know, I mean, I think this, you know, it has to be more transparent, we have to, you know, so my suggestion was that, you know, that we do have, I understand you say that it needs to be voted on in February, but even beyond that, whatever happens then, I think we should have a in-depth study of their financial situation, and have it, you know, both by the commission and by a group of citizens. You know, we've been working for years for the community's health, and I don't really believe that Holy Cross has thought this through, and if they have, that they really care about the health of the whole community. I've included the list of all the providers that do get money from the indigent fund. I'm amazed that it only comes to $38,000 or $35,000, but anyway, that you do have a list there, and that's from the website of the indigent fund, so I know that there's a lot of people in the Piñasco area that have been airlifted, you know, somebody's just now in trauma, you know, having head surgery in St. Vincent's, you know, there's various things that do go to other places, so I just want you, you know, consider and consider having a health study about, you know, Holy Cross and the books, and get to look at the books. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Meara, and Mr. Black. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, Nichols and other residents. I know that we do have a deadline, and Mr. Archuleta, County Mountain, or maybe can elaborate more on that deadline. Otherwise, the hospital will end up losing quite a bit of money if we're not able to meet that deadline. Mr. Archuleta, if you could elaborate on that particular day, which is February 14th?
February 15th, Commissioner. Yes, it's normally January 15th, but because of the issues that have come up with the federal government, it's been extended for 30 days from that, and so we're still waiting to hear back from the state to see how soon they meet that, but as far as we're concerned, the decision is to be made and put on the table before February 15th.
And, Mr. Chairman, I like the idea of, you know, possibly assigning a blue ribbon committee to conduct some sort of a survey, a community survey. I think surveys can tell us quite a bit. You know, I know that being in public office, you get to hear a lot of what goes on in the various facilities that we're involved with, the hospital is definitely one of them. We can hear a lot about, a lot of positive news about how well they're doing, but I know that there are residents of the county that are fairly disgruntled with the way the hospital takes care of their loved ones, and so a survey would, I think, be a very good way to approach this, and find out exactly how the community does feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One correction in that second letter, Ms. Nichols, I don't believe that there's any consideration of omitting funds for ambulance service, the area of savings that we're considering is to other hospitals, and that's what, $39,000. As far as a blue ribbon committee, the board of county commissioners can act as a county healthcare board, I've been reading my commissioner's manual, and it says so in there, so there's a statute that does give us the authority to act as a healthcare board, we want to consider that in the future.
Thank you for your show, thanks so much.
Anything else, commissioners? If not, is there anybody else in the public that would like to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd really like to welcome our new commissioners, and I am so thankful that we can maybe get by the shame that was brought by the last commissioner majority. I have an issue that was never on the agenda, however, I recently wrote a letter to Mr. Archuleta, and... However, I recently wrote a letter to, to Mr. Artuella and Mr. Gortier, it's from the county association, and I was there last week at the legislature. It was way too crazy there for me to ever speak to him personally. But, and I must look like, I must look like hell because I certainly feel like it. I've been achy and feverish and upper respiratory, so I'm not too organized this morning. I was hoping to get ahold of Public to Trill and see if he could show up. I spoke with Madam Chair Rebecca Padas, and she would not be allowed to testify. I also, I called Virgil Martinez last night, and I give, I gave him a scenario. I said, "Virgil, if," and he was not able to come because he was, he was going to be working the night shift. And I said, "Virgil, if you've got two or three feet of snow, and you couldn't get hay to your cattle, what would you do?" He said, "He said, 'I'd call my commissioner.'" And I said, "Are you confident that he would send the equipment to remedy the problem?" He says, "Absolutely." And last year, I was denied by, I don't need to, I don't need to name names. I asked, when the grader was in the neighborhood crowding the roads, if they could, if you could just drop down on the haddas and cut me a bar ditch about thirty feet. Because we had a major project for the Chomisal Ditch Association, a quarter billion grant for them to do their head dates, and we had two weeks of heavy impact on our road. And I put material down on the road every, every year to avoid the aggravation of asking the county for anything. But this wasn't a big deal, this would have been a ten-minute job. And, and I was denied with the legal cover of, of Madam Counsel over there citing anti-donation clause. And I think it was a total corruption of the intent of that provision. I wasn't asking for loads of gravel to be brought into my driveway or anything. This was a ten-minute job, and I was, we had to drive through two feet of water, in and out of our home for months. And I would like to, you know, I'm not sure what to ask for as a remedy, but this was, this was a selective interpretation of anti-donation to discriminate, to personally discriminate against, against me or anybody else that, that, that Madam Counsel feels is unworthy. Anyways, I'm not going to go on anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Mayorman? Thank you, Mr. Phil. Commissioner, good morning, Mr. Philkey. Just wondering, you had asked for a bar ditch, is it on a county road?
It's not a county road. It's a public road accessing, according to how Peggy Nelson described. See, there's no such thing, there's two, there's either a public road or a private road, but there's no designation of a public, and it's assumed that a public road is maintained or taken care of, or, there's no designation for a public road that's not maintained. So, this was, I had, I have a, I had a child, I had a wife that was a teacher, and we had to get in and out of our property. We'd come in in two feet, in two feet of water, our brakes would freeze up, we'd come out in the morning, it was like a hazard. But this was a, in the old days, I could call in, and Joe Mike, I got a picture of him on the D eight, opening us up in nineteen ninety-eight, in that huge storm that the governor declared a state of emergency. I've got pictures of the grader. You call in, the lady on the phone would send in the equipment, and, or you talk, you stopped by the yard and talked to the grader operator, you went to his kid's graduation, everybody knew everybody. They would, they would bring whatever was necessary to take care of it. And, and the officials in Taos got credit for it. And I feel like there's been a whole deterioration in that lately. So, I hope this commission can take care of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Souches, the chairman of commissioners, to touch on the cleaning of the yards. What I do, I talk to personnel here to see if I can do it. And what I do in the Westa area, if the former Commissioner Martinez would have called me, you know what I would have done?
What?
I would have cleaned it with my own personal truck.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have been instructed not to go on private property. I've checked into that.
Well, this isn't, this, I'm sorry, continue.
And, you know, I want, I want to, I want to make sure I'm doing the things right, and I know what I feel for you, but, you know, I've asked, and I've asked, and I can't do it. But what I've done in Westa, near surrounding communities, I go on personal scope now, and I cling for people that need help, and that's probably.
And you're, you're, you're a public servant and safe and caring.
Well, it's just, you know, and, 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 my district, and people are happy there, you know? And, you know, Mr. Chairman, we do give these folks five minutes, you know, it's, we had one here the other day, another gentleman, you know, it's really, let's keep it positive, you know, pointing fingers, I mean, to me, that's an issue that maybe we ought to, that is not, I don't know, it's really degrading, I feel.
What's degrading? Did I insult you?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
No.
Well, I feel the way that you are, you know, I mean, I do, I take care of my districts, you know?
Good.
And I do.
And I wasn't putting you down, I was, I was just citing that, that.
Well, you can't do it, I'm sorry.
But I will be taking, I will be taking this to the, to the legislature and, and see if the Association of Counties can correct what the intent was of that provision. And I would really like to, to maybe have council read that anti-donation clause and see how it applies to a ten-minute job. Anyways.
Mr. Blackman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that sometimes there can be a difference of opinion about what's a public road and what's on our list of county maintainers. But, you know, for our purposes, the roads that we can, that we can fix and work on are those that are on our inventory, apparently that's not. Now, our county attorney, Ms. Barbara Martinez, correctly quoted the law to you. It is a violation of anti-donation for us to go on private property. However, there are exceptions for emergencies, and that's the kind of thing that our staff deals with. But our attorney, for her part, quoted the law correctly to you, and so just know that. And know also that these decisions as to whether a ten-minute job is appropriate because of emergency situation are made by the head of public works and our county manager. And, and so, it's, it's important for you to be able to talk to your commissioners because we are the conduit, but, but once you do that, then, then staff takes control.
Well, my commissioners, I, I.
And, and I just wanted to make that clear because there was a sense of you blaming our county attorney, which was inappropriate.
Well, there was a precedent, Commissioner, in the past, and, and there's also a road in El Salto that has a, I don't know what you'd call it, a dispensation or, or a variance to that rule in El Salto for whenever, whenever it's necessary for, for asking for help. So, I think this is just unfair discrimination or unfairly application of the intent of that law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philkey. Thank you, commissioners. Anybody else would like to speak to the commission or citizens? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. Minutes, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, special meeting, commissioners. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Vice Chairman.
I will abstain. I was not the commissioner.
Commissioner Blankner.
Abstain.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Chairman Brody.
Yes. Thank you. Go ahead and move on to presentation, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following, presentation regarding the NMSU Extension Office and the services it provides to Taos County, Mr. Valdez, our, our new county extension agent. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Dan Brody, and members of the commission. As Dan quoted, I'm Tony Valdez, I'm a native of Taos County. I grew up in Taos and then went off to school and was off. And then my introduction is mainly to let you know who I am and what I do and what we're all about, and to ask you some other special considerations. But anyways, I'm just going to go back into some of my past experiences and that kind of thing, so you know who I am, where I, where I come from, that kind of thing. Anyhow, I worked in Rio Riva County, the neighboring county, for twenty-two years as the county extension agent there. When the opportunity came to become a county extension agent here after Rayo Torres retired, I applied for the position and was granted the position here, or transferred from Rio Riva. My intentions are mainly, you know, I'm nearing that time in my life where I won't have much more life, I don't have much more life to live, I guess you could say, or I'm at least over the hill. And so, I need to look at what's going to happen in the next ten years, twenty years. And so, I want to return back to Taos where I grew up in Valdez, my folks are Tony and Terry Valdez, and, and Valdez, you know, my great-grandfather, that's why the place was named Valdez, that type of thing. So, I'm very familiar with that part of it, although I've been away for quite a while. I did get my bachelor's degree in agricultural extension education with emphasis, with an emphasis in animal science, and a master's degree with an emphasis in animalology, plant pathology, and weed science. So, I bring that education portion of, of the agricultural field to you all and to the citizens of Taos County. At this point, I'd like to, if you have any other questions, how can I get these to you? Just pass them out?
Here, you can give me a brief mention, Mr. Philkey. Thank you.
In this pack of information is a lot of information relating to what extensions we discuss for you in Taos County and around the state. There's thirty-three county, thirty-three offices in the state, or thirty-three counties, there's a county extension office in every state, every county in the state. And, you know, with that, we have an educational program that serves the citizens area of New Mexico and Taos County and alive and out, all lots of life, through the New Mexico State University, the Grand University of New Mexico. I don't know if you knew that. And you all, I'm thankful for, for your contributions. The county provides a third of the budget that goes to extension services in all the counties in the state of Mexico and in Taos County, the Taos County Extension Office. You all provide for funding there and, and housing for, for our heads. And if you'll notice, we have a, a large portion of our delegation that we work with is the 4-H program, youth development. And you probably heard about the county fair and those kinds of things, and that's one of the main emphasis or one culmination of things that we do from, to, to encourage and build youth life skills and, and through the 4-H program. It's one of probably, one of the unique programs in the entire nation. It's the largest youth organization in, in this nation. In Taos County, we have approximately sixty-eight 4-H members and about forty-two adult volunteers. What makes this, and all of these volunteers are unpaid employees on the Mexico State University, covered through Mexico's Port of States Act and liability insurance in that respect. So, they actually, all these other folks work for Mexico State University, Taos County as well, just to give you an example. And it makes it unique because these folks do a lot of work in terms of helping the youth development, that youth develop through 4-H clubs, an organized method of, of learning parlor to procedure, you know, the whole aspect of club generation. If, you know, you're probably looking through some of these, and you'll see that there's lots of things that we meddle in or work on and try to educate folks on, relating to what we do at the College of Agriculture and Home Economics through the Grand University. The Cooperative Extension Service Office here in Taos County is the door for a lot of folks, or an open door, we can do lots of education from the standpoint of either distance education or open up doors to Mexico State University for youth that want to go to Mexico State University to obtain a higher degree or academic degree. On another note, I wanted to pass out, unless you have any other questions, on something else that's, that's coming up, that we need some, some support and your knowledge to be able to pass on this information to the state legislature.
Commissioner, remember, I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Valdez, welcome back to Taos. With regards to some of the projects that you all have, do you work at all collaboratively with Taos County Economic Development Corporation?
I'm familiar with Taos County Economic Development Corporation, and yes, we work with any member of the public in many facets of trying to educate lots of folks. I know for a fact that specialists have worked or have come up from Mexico State University to help with the Food Legally Act type of questions and being in, in, in par with federal regulation, those kinds of things. Certainly, our food technologists has worked very closely with Taos County Economic Development Corporation. I have attended one meeting at this point with Taos County Economic Development Corporation, and I plan to invite them to our meetings and back and forth to do different things from the standpoint of helping educate the public as far as we can with different aspects relating to food production and the safety of uses and production of food. Taos Economic Development Center has moved beyond, you know, we've, they actually have made a hundred percent turnaround from the time they first started to where they're at now, I think. And they're one of the premier, I think, commercial kitchens and supplier services to the agriculture community that exists in the northern Mexico. I wish there were more of these throughout the areas so that people could take advantage of some of these things. Of Rio, Rio Riva County, and Rio Riva County, there's a lot of commercial kitchens, but yet there is not a mechanism to get folks involved in producing food, food or products that are for resale, that type of thing. But I think it's coming, it's just, it's just a matter of time, I feel, the resources are there, it's just getting it all worked into the plan to get things worked out. So, I, I, I feel like it'll get there in time.
Mr. Chairman, for your information, both Commissioner Brody and myself are on the board of Taos County Economic Development Corporation. I would definitely welcome you to meet with Patty, Terry, and the staff at TCDC and kind of try to form an alliance, sort of allegiance to how you can work together, both of your organizations, both of these organizations are very important, and the, in light of trying to create economic development, very, I think it would be very beneficial for everybody, especially the residents of Taos County, if you were able to collaborate somehow in the forest that, that the provincial public report.
Most definitely. Recently spoke with Dan at the New Mexico Association of Counties about a freezer or a cooler, I don't even know what it is, rate picked up down in southern New Mexico. I think that cooler, I don't know if it's a viable cooler, if it's even worth trying to resurrect or whatever, but I was thinking that would be a good place to put that cooler if, if at all need to expand it and increase capacity for cooling and or freezing or whatever that cooler unit is, I'm not sure. And Dan gave me some suggestions of who to talk to, and it's Michael's, at Michael's Kitchen, I guess it's an individual that has some refrigeration experience, so that we're going to look at that and see how we can use that in many other ways, and try to enhance those kinds of partnerships as well.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Valdez would like to welcome you on board. I know Mr. Torres from your area. I know Mr. Torres from your area did us a great job and it's awesome to get somebody to come in with all your knowledge. And I did work with your dad, the mine.
All right.
Kind of that, good friend of mine, him and your uncle also. But, you know, I want to welcome you onboard. I know you did a good job. Amazing, yeah.
One more item, if I may. Chairman. If you look in front of you, this piece of paper here in front of you is a solicitation to the Mexico Legislature for five hundred thousand dollars to enhance the extension service throughout the state. And I'll leave this for you to read and whatever, unless you want to pinpoint some things that are here, but I don't want to take more of your time, your valuable time. But the first page basically talks about the introduction to the extension service and what it's doing and what it's done and what it anticipates to do and wants to continue to do. And then on the back page, probably most important, and that's the portion where these funds would go to and what has happened over the past few years and actually even further than two thousand nine. But if you see, you look at that first graph there, you can see that funds have been dwindling over the years. We haven't had an increase in many, many years. And so we see that, as you, and if you look at the bottom chart at the bottom there where the number of clientele contacts and 4-H youth, it's a reflection of the funds and what it's done as far as being able to service more folks and doing more for folks. So I submit to you, if you can, or if you have any influence with any of the legislators that maybe give a positive view of the extension service and possibly bring this, at least some dollars back into the appropriation for funding New Mexico State University Cooperative Extension Service so that we can continue to do and expand and make more outreach to more folks and help folk and educate more folks in an informal manner. So if you, just take that as a piece of information there to give you where we've been and where we're going and what we're lacking, I guess you could say.
Commissioner Romero. Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Valdez is asking maybe what this commission could do as our county manager could draft a letter, put together a letter of support regards to your program, requesting assistance from the Mexico State Legislature. I think that would be of benefit. I'll give you that on behalf of Taos County. Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. I don't want to take a lot of your time, Mr. Valdez, but a couple of other thoughts with regards to drought management. You know, last week, our commission attended a workshop or a conference in Santa Fe. And the Mexico State engineer brought the fact, you know, the fact that we're heading into a drought, we're already in a drought, and kind of kindly, nicely warned elective officials about the fact that we are heading into probably more of a drought within the next few years. How is your department dealing with drought issues?
Well, the ones that get affected are generally the livestock producers and agriculturalists that have some sort of irrigation or not, they don't have water on demand or those kind of things. So, and we work with the public from the home point of view, from conservation and that as well. We've had a series of workshops. In fact, the one workshop that we had recently was back in, what was it, a few weeks ago or last week, at the Eggside Center here in Taos County for the stockings. A lot of discussion takes place about drought. A lot of folks know that it's coming and it's been there. I generally sit in the FSA committee and I generally write a letter on what has been lost for non-ensurable crop disaster kinds of programs. So there's some funds that come back to individuals that are registered with the Farm Service Agency. We'll receive some funds for some of the losses that they've gotten. And we'll put on workshops to do, educate folks on conservation, how to mitigate those kinds of things. We've had lots of them here in the past. We could do one here. We can do, generally what we've done in order to more bang for the buck, I guess you could say, sometimes we combine counties like Taos, Rio Riva, and Santa Fe together into a conference or workshop or a meeting to address some of those questions and address some of the things that come about. And in our discussions and our education, we have a Master Gardener program coming up. You know, we talk about conservation and water use and how to use it appropriately, home use and those kind of things. So we're constantly working on giving the public tools and education that they can use on their own, for their own benefit, to be able to overcome, hopefully, the potential, the disaster of a drought. And we've seen it, we keep doing that. I have a producer in Rio Riva County, I think he put it really wide. I think he can say it better and even more eloquently than I can, but he said, "The drought has caused us to manage differently." We don't manage like we used to. Now we're hauling water. We have to move cows here. We gotta move water there. We gotta change how much we irrigate. And so a lot of folks, by the way, can sense it and notice it, but we help them make, or inform them how to make the right decisions so that they are productive and can continue with their lifestyle. That's what we do, I mean, on a daily basis, no matter what, if it's a disaster or a drought. And we come up to those all the time. And so, and we've been in a drought for more than next year that's coming up. We've been in a drought for a number of years. So we've been addressing that to some, to a large extent. In fact, there's a study going on in Valdez that you may not be aware of, that Mexico State University is working on trying to show the state engineer and others. Another, another part of the study is in Rito, in Rio Riva County. Another part of the study is in the El Calle at the experiment station there. I think that's another sister agency of ours that creates the research. But anyways, that research is gonna show where is the water going to? How is agricultural impacting the water use on agricultural lands? And how does it go back into the river system? How much is actually being used? And the studies are there. They're, well, they're actually, right now, on the ground, trying to get that type of information. There is great information already available at the El Calle Experiment Station at Penarre Valley there. The study shows that a very small percentage of that water goes into agricultural crops per se, that there's all these other services that the water serves, all the equal system services, you might say, the environment, the ecology, the biological systems that exist with acechias, being viable entities in their systems, biological systems, or green belts. They've served so many other uses. And that's what we're trying to, or Mexico State University and our researchers, extension agents, others, trying to show that there are more than just uses for agriculture purposes. There's more things that come out of uses of water in agricultural lands and other uses that folks way down the river benefit from. So, yeah, we're right on it all the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Blankenhardt.
Yeah, well, welcome back to Taos County, Mr. Valdez, and thank you so much for the work you do. I'm glad to hear that in this time of scarcity, you guys are looking at considering methods of conservation. And thank you especially for the work you do with young people in Taos County. It's great to have that option. I do object to your reference to yourself as being over the hill, though. That would be one of the reasons.
I'm getting, I feel I'm almost, I wanna feel young and continue to do well and keep my energy up, but I sometimes feel the age coming on.
I will look forward to working with you. As long as we can survive. Mr. Valdez, thank you and thank you for, you know, the number of programs that address kids. And, you know, as we see the, I wanna say, the way the world is growing, there's a lot more kids using their tums instead of their shovels. And, you know, I commend you in the different programs you have out there, you know, 'cause I don't think they can put the seeds in the ground with the press of a button, you know. Maybe in some big ranches and farms they kept. But I think it's important that we continue to, you know, move forward in that avenue, teaching the kids to grow their own crops and continue to move forward and raising their animals. It's great when we have the fair here and you see the kids out there with their animals that they've spent the whole, you know, six, eight months producing and then the sale and the number of things that go on there. So I wanna thank you, but I do like, would like you to address, I know there was some legislative money that was given to Taos County for the extension over there for the buildings, I believe. And is that money being spent? Or is an avenue that you're gonna spend it so that you can continue to look for additional funding? I know there's a couple of the buildings there that haven't been completed and there's some issues with some of the buildings. And I know that Taos County does the maintenance over there. And I know there was a wealth problem. Has all those situations been taken care of? And if not, how can we help?
Well, I, Chairman Dan Erle, the staff of Taos County has been very supportive and tried to address some of those questions. I met with your county manager, Steve Erle when I first started about two months ago. Even though he had just started, but he was very responsive and sending folks out and saying what kinds of things were lacking. When I first got there, I heard from everybody, "Well, this is happening, this is lacking, this is not right, this is not in compliance. This building needs this, this needs that." But no one had really come up on the list. And so I started a list. And it was a simple list without priorities. I passed on to Steve and he said, "Well, we'll get right on it." And he sent his staff right away. Well, not only staff, but some contractors to look at the things that were out of compliance, things that were inadequate, things that were lacking, just things that were kind of broken down or needed maintenance. And so he was very responsive and I think he continues to be responsive in that manner. In fact, we had some issue with a fence here recently and that's been taken care of. That place has never been fenced since it's been erected. So there's lots of little things like that. Plus, the south wing extension that will require, you know, about three hundred thousand dollars to get it pretty much completed. Right now, there's eighty-five thousand dollars that Richard Chavez, and I don't know if he's here. Is Richard, yeah, he is here. He's working on getting the architect to look, architect to look at the system that needs to be in place for fire protection, which is priority number one. And then he can add to many of those questions on buildings since that's not the area of my education. He always blows me away with all this stuff that he has to deal with in terms of regulation and codes and compliance and all of that. It's, that's a new world for me. I don't even want them. Because I don't even know the terminology and vocabulary that they use. But anyways, yeah, we need to look at, try to continue to work on those kind of maintenance issues. And Steve has been very supportive. Plus that south wing extension that Richard and I were working, and Michael Pio in your department over there is also looking at seeing where we can find funds to continue to finish that particular south wing portion of that building. So, yeah, I don't know what else I can add to that. That's all I know.
I just wanna make sure, Richard, that that money is being, gonna be spent. So, you know, the legislature continues to grab funds that aren't spent and we don't wanna go lose that. So I wanna make sure that we're moving on it. Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on, discussion of arts committee and sculpture for center. Before we are at Taos County Complex, Mr. Archuleta.
I believe we have some people in the audience, Mr. Martinez, that would like to talk about that. I also did receive a letter from Mr. Whaley over the last week. And we are gonna be scheduling a meeting for that. We've had a couple of discussions with people and sculptures, or people that do the sculptures, but I think it's really important that those people come in front of the arts committee. The arts committee make those determinations. Part of the other discussion that's been happening, reference to complex, has been actually some of the local artists putting up some of their local art here for display so that we can make it a more attractive facility. But, Mr. Martinez, do you wanna?
And then, Mr. Archuleta, just before you go on, just to bring it together, commissioners kind of up to speed. A committee was formed, oh, I wanna say it's been about six months now. And basically, we had a couple of meetings. We went and viewed a particular piece of art. And basically, after that, with the change of administration, it's kind of just kind of fallen by the wayside. But there is a committee ready to act, ready to move forward on. I sit on the committee, but I don't know a whole lot about art. So if there's somebody else who would like to sit on that committee, I'd be glad to give up my spot. But there is a number of things that we need to move forward. And one of the things too is, you know, it was brought to us actually for the use of our parking lot for the, what is it called? Farmers markets. So that's something that will be coming to the committee too. So without taking up any more time, please.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Martinez. Yeah, I was chosen to be on this committee and right now, I don't have a whole lot of information because we haven't been able to. Mr. Whaley, I believe, will have a little bit more information than I have. But the main thing right now is, yes, we have seen, we have gone up to look at the sculpture. The sculpture, thank you. And we, there's been some follow-up that we haven't been able to have access to, so I'm not really sure if it's been done. But as far as committee, I believe, we're ready to continue doing our work and building and doing whatever we need to do. And we all just support that.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Romero. Mr. Chairman, I had asked the staff to put this particular item on the agenda last because I thought it was very necessary, I think. We've all grown as a community that loves art. And we have a lot of people that are very blessed and are very talented to be able to produce art, whether it be sculpture or images or patas, or mutos, or other forms that kind of tell the way of life and history of the community. So, you know, one of the first impressions that I got when I came in just a few days as accounting commissioner, a few days ago, a few weeks ago, is, "Our building looks pretty naked. You know, it doesn't have any art and we live in an art community." I appreciate the letter that we got from Mr. Whaley, who was part of that commission that has been appointed by previous commissioners. It kind of sums up what they're doing so far. But I really feel that it's something that we need to move forward, you know, to put on the fast track and try to get it done. I heard somewhere that there was a budget of about two hundred thousand dollars available on this particular endeavor. And I sincerely feel that not all of that money is necessary for this particular group. Since we do live in an art community, for this particular duty, since we do live in an art community, there is, are many ways that we can possibly have art that could be rotated, you know, whether it be in the form of sculpture outside or even inside, but also in the form of canvas or photographs. And I know that a lot of ideas have been exchanged, a lot of ideas do exist in this letter that I did get from Mr. Wayley. So I really feel that it's something that we need to look at and completely open up to and let us move on it so that we can get some, some stuff presented in our, our beautiful complex here. Also wanted to make a suggestion that in, when we're in the need of other monies available out there, the New Mexico Arts Division has a program also that would, in the past, has contributed great amounts of dollars to our community so that we can have more community art and forums and all that good stuff available to us. And I would be willing to say that we should approach them, our Planning Department or Office of Community Development should look at their history as well as the availability of grants that are available to the New Mexico Arts Division. And I'm pretty sure that we can tap into some of those possibilities through that organization. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Romer. Barbara?
Yes, sir.
There was some, we have motion, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sanchez and Commissioner Romer. Call for the vote.
Vice Chair Medo?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brode?
Yes, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under item fourteen, legal matters, number A, discussion of threatened litigation by former county manager, the matter was discussed in executive session pursuant to open meetings Act exception ten dash fifteen dash one H seven, which allows for discussion of matters subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant. No other discussion was had other than that which was noticed, and I report that no action was taken, but the legal department has been directed to negotiate. As for item B, that was, the commissioners went into executive session regarding the communications facilities tower at the old Mexico Armory in Taos. The matter was discussed under open meetings Act exception ten dash fifteen dash one H eight, which allows for discussion of purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. Nothing else was discussed other than that item which was noticed, and I report that no action was taken, but the legal department was directed to attempt to negotiate a determination of this.
Do we have a motion to accept the county attorney's report?
So.
No, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Not a second, any discussion, Mr. Chairman. Do not call for the vote.
Vice Chair Medo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brode?
Yes. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Commissioner. Motion second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Medo?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brode?
Yes. Thank you, and to all of you, evening.